I'd like to, a motion to reconvene into open session, please.
Second.
Somebody seconded, please.
Seconded, I thought it was.
Loaded and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're in an open session, the first thing on the agenda is the public appearances. I have six, anybody else? Is that one of these? If anybody. Register, register?
Yes.
Okay. Good, well, I'm gonna, actually, Joyce, please.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask you, given the time, I'm gonna ask you to restrict your comments to three minutes, please, each, and we'll start with Kathy Bernards. Give your name and address, please.
Right here.
Yes.
Kathy Bernards, I'm at 5104 Midmore Road in Monona. Okay, do I go?
Yes, please.
Okay, apologize, I'm gonna read this, but, "My name is Kathy Bernards and I'm here tonight to address the board in regards to your directed fundraising policy. I'm a parent of three children in the Monona Grove School District, one child at GDS and two at Winnequa School. I've been active in helping in my children's schools since my son started in the district at age three in 2005. An event I have been most proud to be part of is the Winnequa Team Trivia Event for the last four years. This is a community-wide event that bridged both community and school to help raise money for technology. Winnequa Team Trivia Night was born to help put smart boards in the classrooms at Winnequa, which was lacking the technology compared to other grade schools in the area. The event annually netted $13,000 to $15,000. Winnequa staff, Monona families, Monona government, and Monona businesses contributed heavily to this fundraiser to put smart boards into the classrooms for the first years and iPads in 4K through 5th grade classrooms in the later years. The intention of this fundraiser was to put technology in Winnequa beyond what was provided from the Monona Grove School District. The hope was that Winnequa students would have opportunities that they would not have had otherwise. It has come to our attention that the same quantity of money raised at Winnequa Trivia Night was subtracted from Winnequa's technology distribution from the school district and dispersed to other schools this past year. This action resulted in a net zero for Winnequa School for this fundraiser. I'm here tonight to ask you what your policy is on directed fundraising for events such as Winnequa Trivia Night. It is my hope to find out this policy so organizers of any fundraiser in the district will have clear expectations on where their efforts and funds will be directed. It is my hope that this policy will be consistently applied to fundraisers in the district. Thank you."
Thank you, next is Jennifer Call.
I'm Valerie Gray, second on the list is she.
I'm sorry.
May I read? I'm, I'm, I'm after her, so if she needs me.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Jennifer Call, 5700 Winnequa Road, Monona. Thank you for your time this evening to address a serious issue of concern for us and many others in Monona. Many years ago, we were informed that Winnequa School was significantly lacking in comparison to its counterpart neighborhood schools in the district when it came to technology. Specifically, we were informed that classrooms at Winnequa, unlike those in the rest of the district's neighborhood schools, were without smart boards. Knowing that Winnequa is a Title I school and needy of advantages such as technology, we parents and teachers at Winnequa decided to try to do something about it and came up with the idea of a trivia night fundraiser. We approached other Winnequa parents, Monona businesses, Monona elected officials, Monona city departments, and the teachers and administrators at Winnequa to gauge their interest and garner their support. The response has been outstanding. To date, we have raised upwards of $55,000 over the last four years. This success has been a direct result of Winnequa parents, Winnequa teachers, Monona elected officials, city departments, and Monona businesses giving their time, talents, and contributions to this cause, which has always been clearly described as funding the technology needs of Winnequa School. Those needs, which started with smart boards, have now grown into iPads and in future other items. To be clear, the volunteer activities like trips to the zoo, horseback riding, birthday parties, principal for the day, behind-the-scenes tour of Winnequa, movie trips, craft-making, and lake monona fishing trips, and many more, sold as auction items, were all donations of time and materials by Winnequa teachers and faculty and not teachers elsewhere in the district. The money and items for auction and goods donated to trivia night were from Monona businesses and business owners and the parents, teachers, and Monona elected officials that also contributed their time to organize, staff, and run this event. So it was obviously very disheartening when we learned that all these efforts from our February 2015 event were for naught, and specifically, the money raised from this event had actually been used to penalize Winnequa School. To be clear, what the district has done is saying to any parents, be they from Monona or Cottage Grove, that if you try and do something extra for your child's neighborhood school, we will penalize you in a corresponding amount. Why would anyone, anyone, ever donate the significant time, effort, and money to such endeavors if it meant the tax dollars which they pay were supposed to be their child's, to go to their child's school, were instead allocated elsewhere because that parent made an extra contribution? As an analogy, what student would complete extra credit assignments if the credit for doing so was not granted to that student that actually did the work, but equally distributed throughout the classroom? What you are doing here is ensuring the failure of future fundraising efforts for not just Winnequa, but all neighborhood schools in the district, assuming you treat them the same unless we correct things now. The signal you are sending.
Go ahead.
Okay, should I?
No.
Go ahead, okay.
Just, please conclude again.
Yep, okay, I was, she's gonna use three minutes.
Sure.
So, "The signal you are sending by your actions is clear, don't do anything extra, but rather just pay your share of taxes in the Monona Grove School District. How do you think we can each go back to Winnequa teachers, parents, Monona elected officials, and Monona businesses and ask them to support our respective causes? We are districted by compromise of two communities that are forged together for a common cause that is MG, but we are additionally a network of neighborhood schools. We do not question our neighbors when they are collectively, either individually, or through their PTO, joined together in efforts to raise funds to add needed amenities to their child's neighborhood school, nor do we expect to reap the benefits of their labor in those efforts. I am a member of the Glacial Drummond PTO and I am committed to doing everything I can to make sure that a great, that it is a great school for all those who attend and work there regardless of where they reside. My efforts will remain steadfast when my children move into the, onto the MG High School, and I do not expect my children while attending those two schools to benefit from the dedicated directed fundraising efforts of parents raising resources for their neighborhood schools at Winnequa Taylor Prairie or Cottage Grove. Until we know the protocol for any and all fundraising efforts, I am sad to say that a date for trivia night 2016 has not been set. We stand here with a bit of dilemma of your creation, so I hope the solution too will be yours. MG has long been a partnership, not just between communities, but between the district and its parents. For a partnership to work, all must feel they are being treated fairly, and so now it is up to you to right this wrong. Thank you."
Just here to support.
Thank you. Next up is Valerie, is Erin Staver.
Staver.
Staver. Staver, indeed.
My name is Erin Staver, 6201 Winnequa Road. I know I speak for all of us when I tell you that we're grateful to be here to express ourselves, our concerns, and to start an important dialogue. I'm a proud parent of children at both Winnequa and Glacial Drummond Schools. I'm not only a proud parent, but I'm also a volunteer. I was an M on the committee that initiated the school garden at Winnequa School, and I love consistently volunteering in both of my children's schools. I joined the trivia committee in 2012, though my volunteer plate was already pretty full because I knew the event would be an amazing and welcome opportunity for both Winnequa and the community that loves it. I wanted to be involved in the effort to bring cutting-edge technology to Winnequa, technology that Winnequa School didn't yet have while our Cottage Grove neighbors did. I don't bring that up as a point of competition, I bring that up because Winnequa teachers and staff working in a Title I school also deserve the opportunities to incorporate these tools into their classroom. As the Winnequa community does, they jumped in, teachers, staff members, administration, everyone joined forces to make a successful event that would boost the technology budget, excuse me, at Winnequa and bring new innovation to our school. Happily, trivia night has become what we hoped it would be, a way to bolster our school's technology budget. When funds raised from the event, we secured smart boards for every classroom and new sets of iPads and supplies. All of this happened before we made an unexpected recent discovery. The money raised after hundreds of hours of volunteer time, time teachers spent well beyond their hours of compensation, and after an outpouring of support from the Monona community, both volunteer and financial, a decision was made to simply deduct our total raised from the technology line item for Winnequa. Our efforts and the efforts of the entire Winnequa community, who showed up for the teachers, the staff, the kids, all rolled into the district budget, leaving no increase in revenue for the Winnequa School. That's what we are all working so hard for. It's my opinion that this is strange and very confusion, confusing message about supporting our community schools. If fundraisers designed and implemented for schools by a school are not allowed to create opportunities for that school, there's little reason for asking for community support. Cottage Grove just raised money for new playground equipment. Like trivia night, I imagine Cottage Grove teachers, staff, and parents identified a need and then put boots on the ground to make it happen. Community responded, as did our Winnequa community. Money was raised to create new opportunities for Cottage Grove kids to move their bodies and enjoy the outdoors, which is wonderful. They raised money in their community to benefit their neighborhood school. And frustrated and disappointed in the way trivia funds were handled, that money needs to be restored. In the future, a very clear concise policy needs to be created that doesn't pick and choose which fundraisers are allowed to fundraise as they are intended and which cannot. Another frustration I have is no one discussed this decision with the trivia night committee, and we were left to make this discovery on our own. Excuse me. As it currently stands, there's no plan for another trivia night fundraiser. We collectively planned a fundraiser to benefit our school's technology fund. That's why the community came out, that's why the community members were willing to financially support the event. I can't in good conscience help plan the same fundraiser knowing that what they think they're supporting is not what they will get.
Thank you. Next is Maggie Baum.
My name is Maggie Baum, my address is 4712 Rothman Place in Monona. My two sons are in second and fifth grade at Winnequa, so we've been in the Winnequa School community for several years. And during those years, I've watched with sadness and disappointment as budgets continue to shrink, everyone's asked to do more with less, all of us. I wish this were not the reality for our schools, but unfortunately, at least for this foreseeable future, it is. That said, I have made a conscious effort to do as much as I can to support my neighborhood school. Every time I write a check for a field trip, I contribute to the scholarship fund. I save and sort the smallest little scraps of plastic paper, pen caps, you name it, so that I can terra cycle those items. Every year, I ask my teachers what supplies they need replenished, and I try to provide as much as I can. In fact, Winnequa's address is a preset shipping option on my Amazon account. My hope is that this alleviates what my kids' teachers have to spend out of their own pockets. Along with several other parents, some of whom you've heard from, I founded and built and continue to grow the Winnequa Children's Garden at Winnequa School. An important part of our mission is to be 100% self-sustaining so that there's absolutely no financial burden to the school or the district, and we have made good on that promise. Every year, my family spends many hours and many dollars on that labor of love. And of course, I've supported past trivia night events to the tune of several hundred dollars. This has been with the understanding that the proceeds raised provide additional benefit to our school, Winnequa, to our teachers, to my children, and to their classmates. There was a need for funds to be raised to implement technology upgrades, and our community answered the call in a really fun and meaningful way. I can clearly imagine the sense of frustration and betrayal that we felt by those who stepped up to try to give our kids, teachers, and school the tools they need to be successful. I know that's how I feel. The goodwill of parents and supporters is likely to be irreparably diminished by this lack of transparency. Our parents and our community have the right to know exactly how and where donations are being allocated. Otherwise, we risk that people will simply stop and say, "I've done enough and I've had enough." One of my favorite bumper stickers has always been the one that reads, "It will be a great day when our schools have all the money they need and the military has to hold a bake sale to buy a bomber. Until that day comes, I feel that I am more than upholding my end of the bargain, and I ask you to do the same. Thank you."
I've got one more speaker on a different topic. Would you care to address any of them?
Sure.
Or make any comments?
I guess the only thing I would comment tonight, obviously, I'll do some follow-up and be able to respond much more in depth, when I've done a little bit of research to find out, you know, some of the statements that were made, but I can make this statement that, you know, a couple of our speakers mentioned that, you know, funds were subtracted from building allocation, and that's just not true. There is no building allocation to start with for our schools with the technology. We start with a zero-based budget, we look at our technology plan and what the needs are, and then from there, we purchase equipment for every school. And so, any budget meeting that I had, had no discussion of any kind of donated, you know, money or so on. So I can't speak more than that at this point because I don't have enough information to speak, you know, to it. I need, I'd like to find out exactly what funds we're talking about and what they were used for, and so I will certainly investigate, follow up, and, you know, provide a future report, you know, on that, both to our, you know, parents and our board. So I do appreciate the parents, you know, coming, and those of you that have come, you know, I would like to follow up with you and find out more information, you know, about the concerns that were raised tonight. And from what I know, that the Winnequa PTO, and I'm aware that the trivia night has been, you know, unbelievably successful and well-appreciated, you know, activity for the district, you know, as mentioned, for several years, and we are woefully behind in what we would like to have for technology in all of our schools. And, you know, trying to, some of the inequities that were stated without question are things that we can't have. We want to make sure that every school has the technology needs that they need so that the teaching environment occurs, so.
The question was raised, and what is the distribution policy and how is it, how is it to be handled if their funds were contributed to the district? I don't understand whether the funds were distributed to the foundation, to the school, or to the district with the intent of going to the school.
And I don't know either, I don't have, so I like to, I don't know what was done with those funds, but every funds that were received from the district are received as gifts and the board approves those, you know, as part of the consent agenda, so whether it be cash, whether it be materials that have been purchased and donated, you know, as gifts, there should be a record of all that, so, but I don't know specifically with this situation.
Again, I think, I appreciate that response. I think it's really critically important to find out, just find out a little bit more about what happened here with some thoughts, some thoughts for resolution, and then, if we could have a report back to the board by the next meeting. I know the Education Foundation meets the second Tuesday in December, and that actually is the channel for this funding, so, again, it would just be helpful to be able to have some of that by that time.
Sure.
In addition to our speakers, several people registered in support of, on this issue of uniform fundraising policy. Those are Kim Hayden, Matthew Hayden, Nikki Stute, Kurt Stute, Brando Wicks, and Margaret Rooney-Clark. Thank you. And then, we have one more speaker, Kevin Mickelback, talk about the district calendar.
Kevin Mickelback, I live at 5408 Calico Court in McFarland and work at Glacial Drummond. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and consider this request, and basically, I'm requesting that the district calendar, or you consider to create it months earlier than has been done for as long as I can remember. A lot of times when we talk about changes in the work environment, we, or something being considered or discussed, we often hear about efficiency, cost, savings, and that MG is committed to attract and retain the best. And with all due respect, the early and proactive establishment of the calendar would benefit the stakeholders of the community. So not only help financially, which often seems to be the main focal point, but also facilitate an opportunity for better quality of life. I really feel it would be worth considering since I don't see, and I could be naive, so I apologize, I don't see any additional cost for the district to establish it months earlier. So, big question is like, how much earlier? Well, my wife works in the business world. I imagine there's many families in Monona and Cottage Grove that have the same. Where I reside in McFarland, their calendar was published and distributed to the community last week. This coincides very nicely with the business world where you pick weeks of vacation as the new calendar year approaches. Over the past 12 years, my wife has not always picked correctly for spring break, has caused us in quality of life and finances. Sometimes, winter break, we've been off by a few days, and that costs us also. So, I don't know if I can put an accurate value on how much it's worth for kids to be able to spend time with their actual parents. I'm very confident it's more than the cost of the daycare. Be happy, willing to discuss it, be happy and willing to serve on the committee, actually like the calendar. I just, I think an earlier timeline would be very beneficial and not cost any additional expense. Thank you for your time.
All right, I'd like to thank every, thank you, Kevin.
Okay.
I'd like to thank everybody who came to speak and to register.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Dean.
How, how earlier, how much earlier would you want to see it, from your perspective?
I'm not familiar with all businesses, but usually, the month of December is when, you know, as you enter the new calendar year, that's when people need to pick their vacation. I've talked to some people who have to do it over a year in advance. I don't think that, you know, the days in January, the days in January, that stuff's out there. I understand laws might change and there may need to be an adjustment. I don't think December 1st would be unreasonable if we wanted to have this be a beneficial situation for this year. I don't think that's gonna happen.
I mean, when does it come out, now?
Traditio, from my understanding, well, the last couple of years, it's been either January or February, I believe, last year it was February when it was approved. Our plan this year was to bring something to the board in January. You know, historically, you know, the calendar was a subject of collective bargaining, and so every district varied a little bit when that would be completed, but I think most had the goal of around January or so, that's kind of been the traditional time. But I appreciate Kevin's comments, and he's right, there's no reason that we couldn't do it now. Our plan was to start working on it, I said, within this next month. You know, last year, a year ago, there was a law change with regard to the number of days required and so on, we made a slight adjustment, so we'll want to revisit that again this year, but there's nothing that substantial that, you know, it doesn't take months and months to put together. So I appreciate the comments, and I think that's something we can, you know, have a discussion about.
If I have any remaining time, one of the beneficial things might be if the district could establish when winter break and spring break were without having the full scope of the calendar, that might be beneficial in the short term, but I really think the earlier timeline would benefit many people. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I had a few more register in favor of a uniform fundraising policy, Meg Kramer's, Angela White, and Debbie Reynolds. I want to thank everybody who came to speak and to register on this issue. Anything else? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, which includes approval of the November 11th minutes of gift donations and vouchers payable. I get a motion for approval of the, of the consent agenda? Please.
Some move.
Thank you. That's her second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next consent agenda carries. Next is recognitions.
I have all the administrators with us that might have something.
Sure, I have one. I just wanted to talk about our BSU group, which stands for Black Student Union at the high school. About 12 of them yesterday went over to the Goodman Center and they bagged over 500 Thanksgiving dinner for Citizens of Mon in our city. And the Goodman Center will serve over 3,000 people this Thanksgiving, so our Black Student Union did a great job yesterday.
Very good. I've got one that I failed to mention last meeting, but I think it's still relevant. I received an email from the athletic director from Baraboo, Jim Langkamp, following the regional volleyball match hosted by Baraboo, and it's very short, I'd just read it for the, for the board. It said to myself, as well as high school principal Paul Drost, "I wanted to let you know what a privilege it was to host your volleyball team, coaches and spectators tonight. Everyone in attendance from your school was absolutely first class. I realize the scoreboard didn't show the result you had hoped for, but you should be extremely proud of the manner in which your school, community, and the Badger Conference were represented tonight. Congratulations on fantastic season." So, certainly something very proud we have followed up, you know, with the coach as well.
Susan.
Is there anybody from the high school that's gonna read any names? I don't wanna, you serve, okay, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna read them. And I apologize to the swimmers, I typed out all their names, and volleyball, typed out all their names. The women's swimming, swim team finished eighth in state, we had a fourth place in diving and several other people. It's, that list is sitting on my printers, I'll bring that to the next meeting, and volleyball will be at the volleyball conference, so again, I apologize. Football, our football coach, and again, I say this with a smile because these are graduates from Monona Grove High School that we know, was named Badger South Coach of the Year. Go for that, yeah. First team offense, Josh Eisenberger and Torin Young, and Torin Young was also All-State. Second team offense, Andrew Hurniak, Ross Gallett, I'm gonna say these are honor, will mention offense, Kuz McCosky, Mark Kimble, Alec Ogden, Jacob Zaver, Colin Larch. Badger South Conference Player of Year, Torin Young, and then he was All-State. First team defense, Brady Blaine, Jarrett Meyer. Second team defense, Dominic DeRosa, Adam Skae, Tyler Patton. Honorable mention defense, Davis Perez Berry, Quincy Delorab, Taylor, that's my handwriting, Bellhouser, Lucas Gerlach, Miles Thomas, and Colin Larch. And again, sorry, swimmers and volleyball, that's rejoiced, that's rejoiced. Anyway, again, and for those who were unable to attend, it was the most fun we've had in a long time. We have a lot of fun lots of times, but the gala on Saturday, the 19th, was absolutely amazing. The recognition of the teachers with their grants was excellent, and they did a great presentation, and then we all went into the auditorium and listened to some of the best music we've heard in a long time honoring Lauren Hurniak, and again, I want to thank everybody who contributed, who came, who made contributions. It was a wonderful gala. We had a great time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the MG 21, I'm sorry, is the notice of the school board election.
Yeah, just under announcements is that time of year that we give formal notice with regard to the timeline for candidates for school board election in the spring, and so that information is posted on our website for the application process.
Thank you.
And I'm just gonna add, there are two incumbents, and I know that at least one of those incumbents has already filed their papers for reelection.
Okay.
Responding to the call for candidates.
Thank you. Item I, administrative reports, the MG 21 annual report. Rebecca Fox Barrett, Blair, Phil McDade, and Ian Low are here. And somebody else is here. Somebody's not on the list.
Yes.
Am I sitting here? I'm gonna sit, and I'm gonna lead, okay.
Thank you Superintendent Olson and members of the Monona Grove School Board for having us here tonight on what I know to be a busy agenda for this board. I'm Phil McDade, head of the governance board for MG 21. We at MG 21 always look forward to our annual report to the school board. It allows us to take a few minutes to let you know about some of the exciting things happening in our school, and more importantly, allows you as board members an opportunity to ask us questions about our school. I also think it's worth reiterating our longstanding practice at MG 21. We are an open-door school, and anyone who wants to come visit us to see how we operate and how we deliver an engaged and challenging curriculum to our students is welcome to do so at any time, so please stop by. Rebecca and Ian have far more interesting things to tell you about our school than I do, but before they do, I just wanted to make this one brief comment. We are now in our sixth year as a We are now in our sixth year as a full-fledged charter school, and we believe we are a better school, we are better as a school than ever before. Not perfect, not a finished product, we fully embrace and practice the process of continuous improvement that I know is important to this school board. But we are in this position in part because of the support this board, this school board has given to MG21, support that was demonstrated by the board's approval of our new charter earlier this year. We thank you for your continued support of MG21 and are committed to making MG21 the best school it can be for its students. And now I'll turn it over to Rebecca and Ian.
Well, the mystery guest with me is part of our opening remarks here. Thank you also for having us come tonight. Last year was highlighted by, as Phil mentioned, the renewal of our charter for another five years, but also the hiring of Alyssa Hartson, who is our new science teacher. She's replacing Adam McCormick, who moved to Ann Arbor, Michigan. And Alyssa comes to us from southeastern Wisconsin, graduated from UW Milwaukee with a degree in environmental science and biology. She was named 2009 Young Botanist of the Year. She's lived in Alaska and worked as a wilderness guide with teenagers there. She's traveled the world, she's worked at the McMurdo Station in Antarctica. And we feel so fortunate to have her join our staff because she brings with her a passion and enthusiasm for science that's kind of spread throughout our whole school. And so at the beginning of this year, we had this global food and sustainability class that kind of spawned numerous, numerous projects throughout our school. It reinvigorated our school garden. She's now teaching a chemistry and forensic science class, working on a science seminar for third quarter, and there's just lots of excitement in our school about science because Alyssa has joined our staff. So we're really thrilled to have her, and we wanted you to have the chance to meet her. The other highlights of the 2014-15 school year included, we did last year finish our 912 scope and sequence for our curriculum, and we did include addressing the new three credit math and science requirements. We did move to a full-time FTE third teacher, and that was Adam last year and now Alyssa this year. We implemented a new daily math piece into our daily schedule, so as opposed to having the students scheduled on their own, we scheduled it for them. And we worked really hard to bring our proficiency up in math for our students. We had as one of our goals, a goal of 75% proficiency by all students to reach 75% in the given course that they were in, so we wanted 75% of the students to be at 75%. We didn't quite attain that, we were at 58% of our students achieved 75% or better in the courses that they started out in, so we're still working on that. We did improve our school garden, we put in raised beds, we added raspberries and blackberries and a bunch of other things. We restarted our composter this summer. We got another grant last year from the Burby Derby Technology and Education Foundation, so we were able to add two additional 3D printers to our school, one that was using a metal filament so that we could print metal, like bronze items. We rolled out our new kitchen and our new lunch location for our students last year. We set up a new process for our students to maintain a digital portfolio for their work, and so all of our students have Google websites where they keep all their work throughout their time with us. And we moved to using Google Classroom for a lot of our projects and a lot of our classrooms. One of our goals was to gather some strong social emotional data about our students' growth, and we were able to implement the Dane County Youth Survey and gather that data, and it is included in, some of the highlight summary of that is included in the report here. We became citizen lake monitors for Lake Monona and Squaw Bay with the DNR, and so our students received training for that, and we spent the spring and summer and fall gathering water samples and sending them in. We were able to offer a summer school class in science and sustainability. And we did actually present at the Wisconsin Library Association Conference in the Dells, our book club presented there, and students presented at this conference, which is a pretty difficult conference to get a spot to present in, and our students had submitted a proposal and they came and presented there. Last couple things, we did receive an MGEF grant to start a leadership program for our students, and that's going really well for us. We were able to participate in an international program that Ian organized called the Global Read Aloud Program. That was, we partnered with a school in Manitoula-
Manitoula Island.
Manitoula Island in Canada. And lastly, we did a lot of more service in our community, and so we participated in the Youth Service Day in the spring. We did service projects at Aldo Leopold, at Second Harvest Food Bank, at Community Action Coalition, at the Dane County Humane Society, and even a sock drive for the Bethel Lutheran Homeless Shelter. So a lot of different things that we highlighted from last year.
And although the focus is kind of on the accomplishments from last year, I wanted to briefly touch on some of the things we're doing as part of our continuous improvement to the school for this year. One of the highlights is continuously strengthening our leadership team. Last year, we rolled out a leadership team that met weekly during lunch with students to talk about ways to improve the school, ideas for our Friday community activity each week, and we've kind of amplified that this year by having students in specific roles, as like president, in charge of newsletter, in charge, somebody in charge of social media. And so giving those students those specific roles has made the leadership team more productive, I think, and has helped the leadership team be involved in service opportunities such as helping organize our team for the carbone cancer research rates that we participated in October. And we've also volunteered to help set up the book fair for the Monona Public Library. So leadership team is kind of being amplified this year. Other things we're doing this year is, with the help of Chris Langer and Dee Mathis, we were able to roll out a new breakfast program for our students that has been beneficial for a number of reasons. First, because more of our students are eating breakfast because they're coming in, and we serve between 10 to 15 students a day with breakfast, which has also helped address tardies. We noticed a problem with tardies last year, where about 20% of students were coming in late, and that has almost been erased this, this school year, as they know that we start serving breakfast at 8:30 and are coming in, and tardies are not really an issue at all anymore.
They'll sometimes call me and say like, "Hey, don't stop serving breakfast, I'm on my way," you know, and they're in a hurry to get there and get breakfast.
Yeah, so we really wanna thank Dee Mathis, Chris Langer, and Debbie Winkie for giving us the training to serve breakfast and to help us roll out that program. There are two classes that we've implemented to improve the academics at our school. One is an academic support study hall that meets Mondays, that's focused on math, and Fridays, that's focused specifically on project-based learning. And students who struggled to earn credits during the previous quarter take that class and get specific guidance from us about how to write good essential questions for projects or to get more direct support for math. Another thing we've implemented for this year is a revision workshop each week where we have students take work that they've already turned in and work with us directly on how to revise it and make it their best work. That's been a motto that we've had, we've long had, is we want you to be turning in what you consider to be your best work, and we felt the need to have a specific time carved in our week where we can work one-on-one with students to talk about what can take this to the next level and make it your best work. So those are some of the things we're doing this year.
The other material included in the report, there was, the first page is the summary of our school data. There was some information about links to our student and parent surveys that we do at the end of the year. There was a copy of our budget, and then there were our board goals and our SLO, school goals, some summary from the Dane County Youth Survey, and then the rest of the packet included a curriculum summary from last year, as well as some samples of some student works, a personal learning plan of the students, and a couple of their end-of-the-year metacognitions. Questions, any questions?
Dean?
I have, one of the stated policy goals for the state for, for these charter schools is the fact that not only do you do the good job that you do, but that the experiences that you had could be, could be packaged and perhaps contribute to our, our school, our high school, or other schools as well. Has, has any effort been made in those directions at all? What have you learned that Monona Grove High School might benefit from?
Well, I think we do a really good job writing integrated curriculum is one of our strengths, and I think we also do a really good job with our project-based curriculum. And so I feel like those are two pieces that were very strong and that we are glad to share. We've shared them with other, like, schools, but not particularly within this district. So we've been invited to conferences, we've, we hosted a conference last, not this past summer, but the summer before, where there were people from all over the country that came, and so we've had different opportunities to share-
So Pelican Lake is getting the benefit, but not Monona Grove?
Right. Right. Like, like Phil said, you know, we have an open door policy, we have an open house, we welcome people to come in, we'd like to share what we're doing with people, but it, yeah.
And I would just add to this, Dean, and I think I mentioned this to Peter last time we occurred, one of the real strengths, I think, of our school is our notion of how we focus on collaborative learning. We're MG21, and the 21 is as important a part of this school to me as, as the MG part of it is, because we fully embrace the 21st century skills that focus on collaborative learning. And, and when I was in your position, I saw a lot of that in certain departments of the school. For instance, I think our tech ed program at the high school is exemplary in the way they approach collaborative learning and taking their faculty and integrating what they do in a, you know, a year's worth of courses. I, I think that's a, that's a harder thing to do in a traditional high school, where you're moving from algebra one to algebra two, precal, to that. But I think there are ways that we approach, as Rebecca said, both integrating our curriculum and doing it in a collaborative manner that I think would be good models for most any school, whether it's a traditional high school like Monona Grove High School or, or any school. The one thing that Rebecca said to me very early on in this process that made sense, and I see it whenever I visit the school, is she said, "This is how learning ought to be done." And, and I've always tried to keep that in the back of my mind, is we approach how we do teaching, how we do training, how we do, how we develop our curriculum, how we teach our courses. This is how learning ought to be done. It's how learning takes place once all of our kids graduate from this high school, from our schools. This, learning is done in a collaborative way in colleges and out in the business world. And I, I would love to have our teachers spend time with your, with the teachers in the high school, I'd love to have teachers in the high school spend time at our school learning how we do collaborative learning and collaborative teaching.
I would encourage maybe making some initiative of cross-realization if possible.
One, one of the initiatives we did implement this school year that we hadn't done before was, we attend, Alyssa and I attend a weekly student services meeting at the high, a month, I'm sorry, once a month, we go to the student services meeting at the high school as a way to, to bridge that gap of knowledge about the things that we're doing at MG21, so that counselors there can talk to students who are interested about our program and have a better understanding of what the project-based learning process looks like. But I hope that those monthly meetings will start to increase the amount of communication that happens between the, at least for now, the high school and MG21.
Susan?
Again, I just wanna thank you guys again. Having had personal experiences with the teaching, particularly one of the individuals of this group, and experience of success that that person can bring to your children and your family is huge. And so, again, from the beginning, I know that this board has encouraged and supported in every way we could that ongoing commitment to the other students in this, in this community, so I wanna thank you for that. I also wanna thank you for your work on the leadership grant and your work in the leadership. We saw that presentation for the Monona Grove Education Foundation Board, and it was an excellent presentation. That's one of the things, again, to hear about that tonight is great. We talked about that presentation, oh, I'm on UN presentation, because they're both excellent, and they're a great way for the board to connect with what you do. The other thing is to encourage you and congratulate you for your work in continuous improvement, as Phil has talked about. The Charter School of San Diego received the 2015 Malcolm August National Quality Award, which is based on the continuous improvement theme, and I would say that, I mentioned that to Susan, and she said, "Our school could do that." And, and again, we feel, it's just, it's a lot of work to write that, but we feel that this is, with the way that you've set your goals, that you run very parallel to this model in showing achievement with students, and we thank you for that. And again, something to, a little goal for you tonight. Go for it.
I don't really have anything to add, except I really wanna do that. One of the reasons I so look forward to this report every year, and I look forward to your open house, is because you, it's amazing to me, the energy and the creativity that you put in, the continued growth, it's so obvious every year, and I really appreciate, yeah, everything you do for students in this district. It's great. Thank you.
What potion do you take to give you so much energy?
Go to graduation.
So what have you been doing for mindfulness?
So I, I took the training this past summer that was offered in the district, and so what we've done is kind of two-pronged. In the morning, we start our day off with a morning meeting, and we meet in advisory, which kind of is similar to what you might think of as homeroom. But what advisories are, it's basically the school's divided into three groups, and each one of us has a group of students, and we're the advisors for those students. And so we manage those students' personal learning plans, we meet with them weekly, they present their projects to us, but in the mornings, we all circle up and we do the morning meeting in our small advisories. And so that includes reading the newspaper and talking current events, doing kind of meeting business things, doing some vocab, and then it, it ends with a couple minutes of mindfulness, of students doing kind of mindful breathing, kind of setting their intention or their goal for the day, and kind of, just kind of putting the focus, now we're gonna go be students. The other piece has been that in the Friday morning of that, we've alternated every week, and Melissa Smith, who did the mindfulness class for the district, has been coming in and working with the small groups of students on different related topics and kind of leading discussions and activities. And so those are kind of the two pieces. But we felt that incorporating this in just a small way, just to start, would be a real benefit to our students in helping them reduce their stress levels and kind of leaving behind whatever baggage happened in the morning and being able to focus on being students and kind of going forward and having a productive, positive day.
Have you noticed the benefits?
I think we have. I really think we have. We do math right after the morning meeting, and I think students make that segue a lot easier these days, and I feel like we have had, you know, I, I feel like also I've seen students, when they get into stressful situations, employ some of the tactics we've been talking about, and, and so I think, I think we have. But it's still kind of early, we just started, you know, in September.
Right. And how's the late start going?
The late start continues to go really well for us. We did push it a little bit earlier, so with the breakfast program, what we, our, kind of our policy is that you should be in the building at 8:45, and then breakfast is available between 8:30 and 9 o'clock. 9 o'clock, the doors lock hard and fast, and school starts. And we, like Ian said, I think our tardies have gone to like point something of 1% of, you know, nothing.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was, I was impressed to see, I mean, you're just mindful, like you put it under the category of mental health, very impressed, very interested in, in seeing that. And you mentioned voluntarily a moment ago that you might have future plans related to mental health? You just said something about that, that you might-
I just think, I think this is just starting, is all, you know, like, like I'm not quite sure where this mindfulness piece will go and kind of how it will look as we continue on with it. So right now, we just kind of dipped our toes in by starting with the mindful breathing and kind of having the kids focus on their goal for the day, and then we're gonna kind of see where that goes.
But one of the things we do, Peter, is we're constantly surveying folks, and we've got some really good data from the Dane County Youth Survey that our board just reviewed just this past month, and we firmly believe in collecting data-
Yep.
-to drive decisions about how we can continually improve the school. And I think in the area, there were some things that came up in the Dane County Youth Survey that gave all of us pause, I think, when we heard it, and I think we will use that data as a way to continue to drive improvements in our school that look at issues like mental health.
And I think it's improved, I think it's just incredible that you've taken things like continuous improvement, which have shown very dramatic results, particularly in the healthcare field, in saving lives and reducing death and illness. And the second piece that's been a major initiative has been mindfulness. And they've started all those studies with particularly cancer patients, and they're getting great results, because it reduces stress and it makes you able to cope better. So wouldn't that transfer beautifully with your students? So I really appreciate that you're looking at the research and you're trying those things.
Dean?
Peter, I think the comments that Susan has made with regard to the Youth Survey and so forth, informing, helping to form could be, I think, at least good professional development types of experiences that are, that some of our teachers. I'm trying to build this bridge at this point in the lives of both institutions. Because I, my experience is that when I was a young teacher, I made the mistake of speaking out as a non-tenured teacher at a board meeting on labor negotiations. And the next year, I got assigned to a difficult, let me put it that way, a difficult-to-teach class. And I was completely unprepared for that class. And I spent a year learning on my own. And that was the best year of learning how to be a teacher that I probably had. And I think that some of your experiences could be a length to that.
Thank you.
Are you got any more questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, we really appreciate the time to come and present the information. Thank you again for your support.
Thanks.
Could you write a grant for healthy classrooms?
That would be a good thing.
No kidding? They've blocked it, haven't they?
All right. Next up on the agenda is the Director of Instruction report with Lisa Height.
So we posted that?
That recently, yeah.
Can I just ask that when we send in the mail, a lot of snow? I checked before.
Yeah, after that.
So I won't take it as an omen that the room emptied, right? I think I heard Dean say last time, CNI should be all we're talking about all the time. So Superintendent Olson asked that I put together...
You're in real trouble if we walk out.
Especially since you asked for this. In essence, put together an introduction. So I feel like because there are so many new faces in the CNI area, that perhaps that's a little bit what this is tonight, a bit of us being able to introduce ourselves to you. And at the end of some of the introductory pieces, there's a few points on our philosophy about educating all students, and then a few points specifically about advanced learners. Because again, that was a request that came from the board. So we'll try to meet those items in this. So who is in the Curriculum and Instruction Department? There are four of us who work together collaboratively to try to get the things done that people are requesting and that students need and that teachers value. So I am the Director of Instruction. Maureen Lehman, bless her heart, is the Administrative Assistant, who is the only sort of continuing face this year in this department. And I quickly have to acknowledge Maureen and all the hard work she did in the transition from the folks who were leaving the district for other adventures at the end of last school year, and then the incoming of the new faces. So Maureen's just been a real blessing and does high-quality work. So thanks, Maureen. Julie Briggs is new as well as the District Literacy Coordinator. So she has, again, a pretty full plate, looking at how K-12 is functioning in terms of literacy, reading, writing, looking at grammar, spelling, and more than anything, how are we promoting the love of reading and the desire to read amongst our students? And then Amy Kirsten is our Data and Assessment Specialist. So you may be familiar with Bill Herman's job, and really more of a, I'm going to say like a district technology integrator of sorts. Amy's job has shifted a bit, and her title is Data and Assessment Specialist. In the process to bring some new people into the Curriculum Instruction Department, when we were interviewing, what was loud and clear was that people needed to have a way to access data in an efficient and useful manner. And so Amy really brings a wealth of information and knowledge in how to manage a data dashboard, how to interpret data, and can bring that to building principals, teams, different subgroups of teachers. Maybe it's a department or a grade level or a PBIS team. Whatever the needs may be, she's really found a niche here that she is covering. She's also the assessment part of her role in a bit of transition with Krista as taking on some of the DAC responsibilities. So that's a district assessment coordinator. And the fun involved in that is helping to make sure that all of our state and local assessments are implemented efficiently and that students can do the best they can and shine on those. So what do we do? You know a little bit who we are, what do we do? Again, Superintendent Olson has prioritized some work. And so on this slide, you'll see the three things that have really sort of filtered to the top. The first is to develop and implement a comprehensive district curriculum review and renewal cycle. It was interesting, I think, to hear the MG 21 presentation and specifically how highly they were valuing the 21st century skills, the four Cs. So we talked about communication and collaboration, creative thinking and critical thinking and problem solving. So those are our four Cs. And so that's also known as sort of the core plus more, because you have the common core standards, and then you're also looking at those 21st century skills. That hasn't necessarily been a strong strand yet in the district, but definitely one that we are embracing and hoping that through a review and renewal cycle, we can bring those things to the forefront. The next is looking at a district gifted and talented plan. But I want to be clear to say that gifted and talented students aren't educated separately from and in a different manner than the way we approach all students. It really is part of a comprehensive approach to how we're meeting the needs of every single student in the district and not looking at maybe different little microcosms of groups. It is a comprehensive approach to making sure every student is getting appropriate challenge and growing and learning. So there was board policy on gifted and talented education, and there were some people that were hired to meet some of the needs in some of our buildings. But definitely a comprehensive plan is needed, and that's something that we're working on. The third priority piece is to revise and follow through on a district technology plan. So again, although a technology plan was created, some of the goals ended at 2014. And we want to make sure that we've got strong goals that carry us through. Also making sure that our district technology plan wasn't about simply the acquisition of technology, but rather how technology can serve that broader goal of strong and effective teaching and learning in the district. Other than the priority work, what are some of the other things that are going on in Curriculum and Instruction? For me, one of the most important things is support to building principals. And you know, I'm sure heard, good, bad, or otherwise, about educator effectiveness and particularly the platform TeachScape. And maybe you are familiar with what mini observations or student learning objectives or school learning objectives or professional practice goals are. It really is a comprehensive approach from the Department of Public Instruction to make sure that all educators are as effective as possible. So it's definitely not a gotcha. It's really about making sure that we're, again, continuous improvement. I think you had mentioned that a little earlier about how valuable that is, how teachers are setting goals for their student learning, how schools are setting goals for the schools' learning and professional practice, meaning how teachers themselves are going to engage in professional development around that. So what's my role in that? Some of that has to do with the technical aspects of TeachScape. Some of it has to do with understanding the requirements of educator effectiveness. And in addition, I am helping out the principals with their mini observations. So I get to be in 160-some classrooms from all grade levels and assisting in that way. That way, building principals can focus on the announced observations, and it can be, that evidence can be collected and joined together with the evidence from the mini observations to make some determinations about how our teachers are doing. I also help facilitate district and state assessments, making sure that not only are we administering within the timeline, but again, that everybody has what they need to be able to do well. Our schools have created PDSAs, Plan Do Study Act, and they are following through on that as a way to continuously improve. So we are doing some work to support that. In part, we are contracting with CISA II and Diane Jensen to make sure that, again, principals have the support that they need to move their buildings forward. And so we've had some great meetings with the principals on their plans for this year. And in addition to that, the service delivery work. So service delivery, again, has to do with sort of that approach that we take to educate all students. Supervise and steer the work of our district literacy coordinator and district data and assessment specialist. So what are those two working on? Julie has a program review of the K-5 Wonders Reading Program in process right now. So that was implemented last year for the first time. And as you know, if anything, the first year, it's sort of one of those like survival-type things, right? It's all new to everybody, and people are doing the best they can with all the newness and the expectations. Year two, we're breathing a little more calmly, and then we have to take a step back and say, is it working? Is it doing the things we need it to do? Are there any gaps? Are there any places where we need to complement what wonders bring so that we have the most effective reading program possible? And then again, the Wise Dash Local is a data dashboard that we have an agreement with in Data Warehouse. It is a pretty responsive tool for principals and eventually for teachers to use. So the promise of data sort of at the click of a button can be fulfilled. Couple other things going on, planning and preparing for summer school and August literacy sessions. You heard Kevin talk about the need for a calendar to come out sooner rather than later. That same request comes with summer school and how we start to plan for that. So it's really not done in May for June. It's done throughout the year to make sure that that programming is done well. And then we can do nothing without some funds. And so in partnership with Jared, really looking at the curriculum budget and in addition, the title funds, and making sure that money is going to where it's needed most and that we're making sure that our students are having what they need and our teachers are feeling supported as well. There are some particular groups of people that CNI works closely with. And so Monona Grove New Teachers Project is one of those groups. And I'm a member of the Steering Committee in addition to working and supporting Sarah and Vicky and Tom in their support of the new teachers. So they do wonderful work. They are well-trained, extremely patient and knowledgeable people. And our new teachers are certainly benefiting from the sage advice and the calm and compassionate approaches that those three people take with them. District Library Media Specialists, in a lot of ways, maybe due to budget, maybe due to some other limitations, our library media specialists have had to fill the role of tech integrators at the building level. They do phenomenal jobs trying to make sure that not only is the library a thriving and vibrant place, but also that the building is moving forward in terms of understanding the best uses of technology. Another group is the District Gifted and Talented Resource Teachers. So although small, they are mighty, and they do some really great work. Their work really comes in three main, I might call it, buckets. So they do some small group enrichment work in the schools. They also do some enrichment activities outside of school. And in addition to that, they do some coaching of teachers to make sure that our regular ed classroom teachers are understanding the needs of advanced learners who may or may not be identified. And then the last group is our District Reading Specialists. So again, a larger group, about a dozen people, who really are working in two capacities. One, to help general ed teachers understand the needs of literacy instruction for the different grade levels, and also to do some small group intervention with groups of students throughout the day. All right. So now, as promised, moving into sort of that more philosophical look at what is teaching and learning about in Monona Grove School District. And again, not sharing anything that you don't know, but just repeating it as part of this introduction. It is about learning for all and making sure that every student is meeting growth targets and being successful. And hopefully being successful in ways that are tapping into their strengths and their passions and not necessarily feeling like it's we're being successful in things we aren't caring about. I think MG 21 is a really great example of how students' passions can drive the work they do. And making sure, you know, Dean was talking about building some bridges, some of those great things that come from charter schools. I mean, I think the intent historically was that's an incubation space and that some of those lessons learned in that area should be shared and filtered out. But it is true that a charter school's different than a traditional comprehensive high school. So it can't just be the same. You definitely have to say what can work in that larger setting. But there certainly are overlaps. Integrated Comprehensive Services is part of that service delivery model. So again, when we talk about how are students having their needs met, ICS is about a collaborative team approach. So for those of us who were in the classroom a decade or more ago, you know, maybe part of our reality was we had to go it alone. It was a lot of isolation. And maybe you talked to people next to you or across the hall or at a department meeting, but truly, most of the work was done alone with the kids. So it was as a high school teacher, me and my, you know, 150 kids that I saw throughout the day, and you sort of shut your door and did your best with them. What we know is that isolation and sort of one mind at a time isn't necessarily going to get us where we need to be. So it truly is the power of the collective. And that's what ICS or Integrated Comprehensive Services provides. So although a regular ed classroom teacher may not have the same training as an ELL teacher or a special education teacher or a reading specialist or a gifted and talented teacher, those people can come together and form a really powerful team. And so that's how we meet the needs, and that's how we're able to differentiate. The last piece up there has to do with Response to Intervention, which is an acronym that's sort of transitioning to multi-tiered system of support. And that is saying that ongoing progress monitoring of all students in terms of their ability to reach a learning target is a regular part of daily practice. And when you're seeing that there's potential for some additional needs, whether it comes through remediation or enrichment, that teachers are able to supply that. through remediation or enrichment, that teachers are able to supply that. I really like this graphic, so I thought I would share it with you and hope that you would find it enjoyable as well. So this is a graphic of a continuum of service that we are using. It's a little bit of that RTI put together. Traditionally, RTI, you would see a triangle with a universal level, a tier two and a tier three level. What this graphic shows is that really intervention and enrichment work together in that although tier one is a really strong universal level where we hope most students are getting their needs met, as you see on either the left or the right, there are times where more interventions are needed. And you try the sort of least invasive first and then you look to see if you need more intense interventions to help students meet growth goals. And then to sort of wrap up this presentation, Advanced Learners, some of the pieces that come into play when we're talking with some of our most capable students is to make sure we've got a formalized district plan that includes the identification criteria and the process to officially be identified as gifted and talented. What are the programming components and supports that are in place for students either identified or not? And also make sure that our GT resource teachers are understanding the breadth of their job descriptions and again, how they can best serve students, but also help grow all of our teachers to have some of the same understandings they do about capable students in their classroom. Currently, or even, I guess I'll say past practice, has been to focus on the first two of the five areas of giftedness. Did a nice job with the general intellectual ability and the specific academic ability. We are required to include all five areas, so we need to make sure that creative thinking, leadership, and artistic ability are part of our overall district plan. And then the last piece has to do with the continuum of services and again, the specific identification criteria that we are drafting. When we have a plan in place, that will be something that will come before you, but for right now, this is for conversation. It is very common to see the three tiers shake out in a way that is similar to this slide. Ninety-six percentile would, up to ninety-six percentile would be included in that tier one approach. When you're looking at tier two, you're looking at students who are scoring in the ninety-seventh or ninety-eighth percentile. And tier three, for the really intensive interventions, you're looking at students who are in the ninety-ninth percentile. And again, currently, we're using MAP results as our indicator, but that's part of the process of drafting the district plan is to make sure that we're using the best indicators or multiple indicators to make sure that we are identifying students and their needs. But I'll just, it bears repeating to say, whether identified or not, it is about understanding students, understanding where they're at and where we want them to be, and making sure that we're meeting their needs so they all are facing situations that are appropriately challenging for them. And that can happen without a label. So I want to thank you for requesting some information and an introduction for your interest in this work. And then I'm sure there are thoughts and questions that I will do my best to respond to.
Thank you. Questions? Somebody has to have a question.
Susan.
Hi, of course. I always have a few. One, it's not a question, it's just a statement. I just wanted to thank you for being at the gala.
Oh, sure.
And Julie was with you.
Yes.
That night, which was really nice because it gives Lisa a chance to see the community in a different way. And I thought that was really wonderful that you were there, so it was really nice to see you there. I also sincerely appreciate, and I wish we could call it something else, and it kind of looks like you're trying to do that, Advanced Learners instead of Gifted and Talented. The theory and the research has said for years, it's about reaching every student in their capabilities, and you said that repeatedly. So it's not just Gifted and Talented. So it makes you a little nervous when you start looking at the numbers again, ninety-six percentile, because you have kids who can qualify for a particular program that helps them to develop in a very exemplary way. That isn't going to be here, but you develop them in another way. So I really appreciate that. And this whole thought that we've been working on in terms of advanced placement coursework, not just being, what people look at is for advanced learners, but encouraging students do that. And when you go to the Verona presentation and they did their research, the one thing they found, and I noticed you mentioned doing the best things for students and teachers, was that the barriers to participation in the AP classes were more often the teacher than the student not feeling that they could do that work, but the teacher doing that. So the fact that you're expanding the areas of giftedness and looking at including leadership and artistic ability, again, developing those talents. And again, we did some work with Milton Pike back at East High School and a lot of the people that we're working with at the time and the things that they were accomplishing were amazing. So I think it's wonderful that you do that before we have DPI come in and say, you don't have a good plan. So I really appreciate that you've integrated this into the total picture. And I don't know, I guess my question is, are you going to have enough time to really do all this? So don't answer that.
Well, as long as you don't need it by tomorrow, we'll find some way to get everything done.
The truth is, other people recognize that it does take time and that you're really great at being able to do this. Because I sat down in a WSB meeting with the director of Personnel at Super, she almost didn't sit at my table because we hired. So they're not wildly happy about losing you. They're wildly happy about having you, so it balanced.
And if I could just specifically respond about advanced placement, you're exactly right. Even College Board will say, we want to reach all students and have them have a college-level experience where there is a lot of support able to be wrapped around them rather than have their first taste of college be when they're actually at college and that level of support isn't there. So there definitely is ways, many, many ways, there are many ways to grow advanced placement programs, to help students see themselves as, I'm going to say, AP-worthy and AP-ready. And in speaking with Pam Hammond, who's principal at Verona High School, one of the barriers as well was deemed an information gap. And that students just didn't even know really what advanced placement would entail. It was sort of like the scary, like, you know, only the best and the brightest go in there. And that perception that some students had about advanced placement, or even some families who'd never really even heard of it. And so, you know, part of the work that we have before us is make sure there isn't an information gap and make sure students understand that they're welcome and invited to rise to the challenge of an AP class. And again, they have to be willing to work hard and put forth the effort, but that it is doable and that they can succeed if they're willing to put forth that time and effort. And they can find an AP class as we grow the program that fits with an area of passion or strength. Because there are a lot of choices out there. Thank you.
Dean?
I have a couple of things. When I was looking down your list there of, you have kind of all the people there, the library people and that sort of thing. When I look back on the list of positions that we cut in the schools, they seem to be the media assistant specialist. There's a lot of that support, the kind of the, there's a bit of infrastructure in there. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'd like to make sure that any revision of our referendum is capturing some of the critical needs in the CNI type of thing. And I don't know really what's captured here. And I think if we're going to do a, if we're going to do a referendum, I think that we need, I think that we ought to have, we ought to have CNI, and I don't know whether it's personnel or curriculum instructor, I don't know how that was divided out, but I'd sure like to see CNI look a little more like the roof budget than not. You got my, what I mean? So I'm just urging you to review the teaching and learning areas of this because if we're going to do this, I think one of our selling points is the direct contact and teaching and learning in the classroom. The second thing, did, we all, several of us went to that personalizing learning and technology, and I think several of us learned a lot from you just sitting around, talking there. Is this anywhere in your scope of moving towards this? Or I don't know if you've discussed it internally or not.
Yeah, when we talk about the curriculum review and renewal cycle and we're talking about, you know, starting with what are the standards that we want to embrace and how best can we create the learning opportunities for students, that's where that fits in. It's part of that overall comprehensive look at K-12 within each discipline.
It looks like, looks like that's a good framework to integrate technology with learning.
Yes.
And just one other comment. The, several years ago, for the Board of Regents, they asked, they're asking the question, why doesn't the top two percent select UW-Madison? They want to go to Harvard and Yale and Stanford and that sort of thing. And that really wasn't quite the case, but that was the, at least the press reception. We interviewed, my research team interviewed about 110 students who were in the top one or two percent. In that, when they were in their sophomore year in the college they'd chosen. Part of the interview was to find out how they made choices and all that sort of thing. But the most significant thing, as I recall from our process, was that they had, they had opportunities, particularly in science, to where they could demonstrate creativity, academic skills beyond the specifically satisfying the courses. They ended up, almost every one of those kids, about 50% of them, all mentioned science. It wasn't the academic advisor and the guidance officer, you know, and that sort of thing. It was always the teacher that did it, but science was the predominant area and it was usually science fairs or science projects and so forth. And I think that if, I think part of that is encouraging their ambitions to, so.
And if I could just share, as a response to that, I think that when we talk about the targets that we're asking students to hit and tying into the personalized learning approach, we have to be open to multiple pathways for students to show what they know. And that hasn't always been the case. Sometimes it's been fairly narrowly defined about what will it mean to know X and how will you show me that? Is it on a test of some sort? Is it doing this lab? Is it conducting this experiment or writing up, you know, this report? And quite honestly, if we open that up a little bit and still hit the essential standard, but do so in a way that incorporates some student choice, not only are we personalizing it a bit, but that creativity and those areas of strength and passion for students can come out more.
Good job.
Carrie?
I really appreciate you being here because this is an area where I have some concerns. In general, the district immediately fairly positive about the awesome things we're doing, but I think we are deficient right now in some of the things we're doing for our highest ability learners, and so I'm really interested. And I had a couple of just kind of questions, notes. One of the comments you made about the tier one, two, tier three and thinking about the percentages, you're looking at students who are in the 99%. That's not like on a per school basis. It's not just picking one or two or three kids in a school who would be qualifying at that level of performance. You're talking about kids who are scoring the 99% on the MAP test and things like that. Do you have a sense of how many kids would be in that cohort at any of our schools?
Well, I can talk about right now, again, we've used MAP as an identifier. It's not a multi look at giftedness. It's really a fairly narrow measure. But looking at where we have our GT resource teachers right now and the number of students they're servicing, we're probably looking at anywhere from, you know, 30 to 40 students at an elementary building and perhaps slightly more than that at a middle school building. I'm not sure if maybe, I don't want to say as far as double that, but, you know, maybe looking at closer to, you know, 60 or 70 at a middle level. The level of service varies based on the need of the student. So that doesn't mean they're all getting the same services. So again, that's why I thought it was important to address that needs need to be met regardless of labels. So if for some reason I didn't score in the 99 percentile on MAP, but I am in fact a high ability learner, I should be able to still have my needs met. And so it's important that that message and that practice become just institutionalized in how we work. And sometimes when we are very focused on continuous improvement, we're looking at achievement scores based on who hit the target at this level. And a lot of that involves bringing some struggling students up to maybe a grade level proficiency. But in fact, when we look at growth, we want to make sure all students are growing. And that means that even our students, again, who, you know, are highly capable or advanced learners are having their needs met as well.
Yeah, thank you. Because I feel like there are dozens and dozens of kids who are performing very well, in particular because of our four-year-old kindergarten curriculum and how well that prepares them even in those early elementary compared to their, you know, peers around the state. So thanks for that, but I was just really curious to see the numbers of what kind of cohorts we've been talking about, if that comes up at some future point, I think, of our population.
Well, I hope we would see some changes based on the fact that we will expand to include all five areas of giftedness and that we will be looking at multiple measures instead of one static number. So, and we also know that giftedness, it's fluid. And so again, it's really hard to identify in the early grades. Students are rapidly progressing and just, you know, hungry for new learning at those very early grades. So it's hard to pinpoint, like, let's say in first grade or kindergarten. That's why the label, that piece is so important to say, regardless of label, you're getting what you need. But as students get older, again, that can still be fluid. And sometimes it can change in areas of interest and, you know, where students have decided to explore more on their own or learn more, and then that can manifest in different ways in the classroom.
Yeah, thanks. And the other jump that I had, just in the sense of the five areas that you mentioned, my note in the margin is, what is your vision? So if one of the areas was artistic ability, visual and performing arts, what would you like to see happen specifically related to that area?
Well, again, it's not, so I'll start by saying, it's not about what I would like to see per se. It's what we as a group decide is best for our kids and, you know, so that's in collaboration with a lot of people. But what could it hypothetically look like? Going back to Dean's point about sort of, you know, that creativity and open-endedness and my response was multiple pathways to learning targets. If I am in a math class and my area of giftedness is visual arts and I'm asked to show what I know, maybe I can represent it in a figure drawing or a geometric something versus a linear equation. You know, so there may be ways to say to students, here are some choices. And again, when we look at students' assets that they bring to the table, how do we make sure that they're able to capitalize on that in areas that may not have always been open?
I was reading this differently. I read this as visual and performing arts, so I correlated that to our related arts, actual music and tactile art, not necessarily expression of it in the more, what was following here is specific academic ability.
So really, it's more of a way of thinking. And so if that's my area of giftedness, I see the world that way and it's a way that I process things. So it's sort of like those people who have mathematical minds, and I apologize, that's not me, but the mathematical minds, when they look at things in the world, they always put it sort of into that context because that's their area of strength. People who are maybe really musically talented might always sort of want to put things in that way of knowing.
That helps me because it's not about supporting musically inclined students in music activities.
Correct.
It's allowing music to be... It's allowing music to be in reading or social studies or other parts of what they're already doing. Okay, that's super interesting. Thank you.
Jennifer?
I had two quick questions. The first is to what degree does our literacy person dip down into our pre-K?
So we do have the district literacy person? Or do we have personnel that are working with 4K?
I'm, I, for my question today?
Yeah.
It would be, does Ms. Briggs interact with our 4Ks and?
Yes. So we do have a reading specialist who does service 4K specifically, and she's part of that team. So Julie has met with every grade level. She's been to every building, every grade level, every team meeting to ask them about implementation. And also has then surveyed them individually because some people are more comfortable talking about programming without a group. And, but yes, she's working with the 4K literacy teacher as well.
Gotcha. And then my second quick question is, do you see the topic of numeracy already, you know, happening at our upper elementary or lower elementary?
Yeah.
How does it maybe tie into future planning?
Yeah. Great question. So I think if we would agree that literacy is king, numeracy is queen, right? I mean, it's right there. Like, it needs to be, it needs to have some attention. Or vice versa.
They're buddies.
Yeah. But they're both really important and.
Co-equal.
Yeah. Ruling together. So, okay, I'll change my analogy next time.
No.
Put the man on the top. Okay, so anyway. But that, that level of support in numeracy is something that needs to be addressed in, in maybe similar ways to the way we approach literacy. Meaning if we have reading specialists, sort of where are our math specialists? Or if we have reading interventionists, where are the math? Like, how, how are we coupling that? And again, I, I do think it's, you know, important that we make sure students are able to access information through reading. I mean, it's everywhere. You can't progress, even in math, without the ability to read. So, you know, that's just vital, that we start off strong and we carry that through. But the, you know, mathematical thinking and processing, you know, we can't, we can't forget that either.
Susan?
And again, I know part of this is everybody is kind of new with this, but some of us, Susan and myself, and Dean, have had kids in the district for quite a while. And are we still sustaining the advanced math programming? Because if we are at the middle school?
Yep.
Then straight up, Carrie? That's another minimum of 75 kids just in that program, maybe 150. Because at, at sixth grade, you can take pre-algebra. Seventh grade, you can take pre-algebra and/or algebra. And in eighth grade, you can take pre-algebra, algebra, or geometry. So if you're looking at numbers, that's, that's a piece that we're doing. And then you have to integrate those needs into the high school programming, which again, I think is great that you've done that. So I, so one of the questions I would have is, do we anticipate now that we have a more structured science program and being able to bring some of the advanced science programming into other levels of the district, such as the middle school? I mean, could we sustain some type of biology program?
So science isn't as sequential as math. And so, you know, you really see so often that, you know, levels of math sort of, you know, feed into each other. When it comes to next generation science standards, which is really what the middle and high school levels and, you know, in part will get with the elementary as well, that's why the K-12 scope and sequence review has to happen so we can make sure that we've, you know, instituted the, the science standards well at every level and that they are feeding in. So my response there, Susan, would be that there are some really high-level thinking skills required when you look at those standards. And that can happen regardless of what the title of the course is. So, you know, can it still be like a, more of a survey course? Like an integration of different things? A little biology, maybe, a little physical science, a little life science, sort of all put together? You could still have that experience and see that those standards are pretty high level. And a lot more inquiry and a lot more authentic lab experience. Again, you know, our, our traditional view of labs, the teacher already can predict what the outcome will be. And yet we have students go through that so they can understand the procedures. Next generation science standards really asking students to create some authentic experiences where maybe we don't know the outcome. And, you know, how exciting can that be? So again, and some more engineering work is filtering down more of that STEM piece, so.
Fourth grade science fairs are amazing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Good job.
Thank you.
That's very, yes, thank you. It's a very thorough report. Everybody very much appreciate that. Item three, Dan's superintendent report.
Okay. I'll keep this fairly brief. We'll have certainly more discussion coming up in the future. But I think it's important to just understand where we're at in the process. It was actually about a year ago when the board authorized establishing a healthcare benefits planning committee. And so the initial work that was done last spring was, we kind of called it, we did call it strategic planning, but it was really just kind of looking at big picture of what, you know, you know, not only our plan with healthcare, but more, you know, more globally is, or, you know, about what it could be. And now we've come back this fall to pick up what we've left off. We're looking at more specifically, okay, again, what does our plan have? And what are the different options perhaps in the future? So our renewal date for health insurance is January 1. So for the upcoming January 1st, you know, no change. You need months of planning, you know, in order to look at that. But what we did, working with Al Yeager, who was our insurance consultant, he looked at our, our plan and kind of, we called it a dry run of what might it look like if we contracted individually with a healthcare provider versus the state plan where we have an option of six different things? So looking at Dean, looking at you and at Dean, because this is plus. If we went with one of those exclusively, what might it look like on a cost piece? And then, of course, we have to get into, there's a lot more just cost to consider. And, you know, how many employees are currently in certain plans and have changed and all that. So the initial numbers that came back, we did get quotes from those groups about if we went individually. And there's potential for some real significant, you know, savings. But again, it's not just about the money, but doing our due diligence, of course, that is a factor. So, so the committee is in the process of reviewing that. And, you know, those on the committee have seen this. I did just post this afternoon a document for you to look at. But keep in mind, this stuff for now should stay confidential because we're not really doing anything with, these aren't formal bids that we're going to be acting on. But just to give you an idea what might look like, certainly these have to be updated next year. But we spend around $6 million a year on health insurance premiums to the district. And so the preliminary numbers coming back with some of these groups, it could be as much as a half million, even, you know, $750,000 of potential savings. Now, the funny thing, I mean, it's not funny, but the reality is that our increase is at 8%, 9% a year. If you had that sort of savings, it'd really be like, oh, you could freeze for a year, you know? And, but it is a significant amount of money. So that's where we're at in the process. The goal will be that for this committee to present to this board by next May, basically a recommendation of, you know, here's where we're at, here's what the board should consider. The board will have several months to review that recommendation and look at alternatives. And basically, if there is going to be any kind of plan change by next September would be the time that you'd have to make that decision. So we're in good shape time-wise. I'll see if there are any changes proposed, the communication with staff and so on along the ways is also real key. But that, that's where the process. I think right now we're probably on pace to probably continue meeting about monthly, you know, as we move forward. And then as we get closer, you know, we can give more detailed reports. But that would be kind of a final piece is wrap up that working made.
Dan, that's a timeline that means our teachers would sign their contracts and come back. But then potentially we could inform them that their health benefits are changing.
Yep.
After they've kind of committed and that the change could hit them this in the January.
Right. And we actually talked about that. And so the idea would be that, so we don't have surprises, that we would inform our, our staff, the teachers and support staff before summer of here is where we're at and here's what the recommendation would be.
That's important.
Yeah. And then, and then when they come back in fall, again, more informational sessions before the board actually board on anything.
That'd be great. Thanks for that. Because I wouldn't want to surprise anyone with that.
Absolutely not. This is a, you know, we talked about, that's probably the number one thing if you make a plan change is just, is changing donors. And that's a real personal, very important thing. No doubt about it.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I understand what I'm asking here, but is there any way to team up with like a McFarland or other districts around the area and say, we spend $6 million a year, they spend $6 million a year. What is your price for $12 million a year if we guarantee you?
There are districts that have done that sort of thing. We haven't talked about that specifically at this point. And I'm not sure, and I know the one thing I'm still learning, the Dane County market is so different than the rest of the state, you know? And it's up to our advantage in some cases because of the competition. But, so I'm not sure how much of that, if that weighs into it. That's a great question. I don't, Jared, do you know the answer to that? If area districts are considering that as an option?
I think there's none that have, are doing it across the state, especially in northern Wisconsin. There's a lot more of that happening just because of the, you know, limited number of resources they have and also limited number of places to go. So, but it doesn't hurt to have those conversations. You know, one of the things is how you set it up, do you have two options? And we do that for our risk management right now. And that's how we purchase our property insurance and our liability insurance. So there's, you know, obviously those conversations can be had.
Susan?
Dan, I just wanted to clarify. There actually will be a recommendation coming from the committee to the board, right?
Correct.
So again, Carrie, that's all teachers. So whatever that recommendation is going to be.
Thanks for that.
We, yeah.
Not thinking about it on the committee, just the process of it.
The only, there's only.
It's a good point.
I'm a board member that sits on the committee, but I just sit on it. And Susan was sitting on it before.
And I have removed myself because I actually received the benefits. So I'm not, I'm no longer having any comment on it here. And I will not vote on it.
And I misspoke. It's all teachers and support.
Because I received the health insurance for the district in my retirement. So I really should not have anything to say about what the choice is.
And I misspoke. It's not just, it's staff.
Yeah, thank you.
All employee groups are.
So that recommendation.
Teacher was on it as well as.
Yes. And it's pretty representative and well attended, so I found that very helpful.
Yeah. And all staff. It's not just teachers.
Yes. This is all wonderful. Mostly, I think, because I was pointing that out in my mind and thinking, okay, great. So the board takes action in September and then people find out on it. You know what? Ah!
It's definitely on people's radar. They're well aware of it.
That's why I would have made it.
Again, that's why that committee was composed that way, which would be really great. And the other thing that I think that Dan mentioned that I want to say too, that I've seen be a major consideration is, again, it's not just about changing physicians. That's what they talk about. Ah, if you change a plan, you may have to change physicians. It's about what this system offers. So you may have a system that offers a wound clinic and another one who doesn't, who won't pay for you to go to the other one. So it's not, it's about services. And that's a big, that's another big piece of what is factored in here. So when you look at slide 17 of ALMS, where it talks about rate changes for 2016, that gives you a number, but it doesn't tell you about. So if you have to pay $2,000 to go to a wound care clinic out of service, you just blew your savings. So it's lots of things. But it's nice because the committee is the one assessing it.
And actually, even though I just said I wasn't going to make any other comments on it, I will make this comment, which is the concern that was raised and that has been raised among the teachers is that we not just look at cost, which you just said we aren't, you know, the board won't be doing. I mean, they, they just want to know that, that the district won't just go with the cheapest plan. Because they're worried about the continuity of it, what kind of guarantee. And we did talk about the fact that this is a board, I think, that understands all of that, that there's more to it than just cost. And then what we would do with the dollars saved and that whole piece is all something that you'll all be talking about when it comes to.
Susan, I, I was right after I, right before I came on the board there with Act 10 and that sort of thing. There were changes then, right? Were there health?
Just, just that staff now pay a percentage of their health insurance, that's the only change. There was no change in the plan.
It's no change in the plan.
Yeah, along with what Dan, Dan said, I, I guess, when I, when I first got on the chat room was how much chat there was going on about, does anyone know of a pediatrician who deals with?
Oh, that was because.
This type of thing. I mean, there was really a lot of concern.
That was because, yeah, one company drastically reduced their rates and there was a lot of jumping shift to that company, yeah, for that reason. That plan, that plan.
If we can move on.
Right.
Please. I'd like to take a five-minute recess. And then we, if we, when we return, if there's no objection, I'd like to move item two, the short and long-term budget forecast, to the next item on the agenda, simply because I want to make sure that we have that discussion before it gets too late.
I thought maybe Jared wanted to go home or like.
I don't care about Jared. No. I care deeply about Jared. I just want to make sure we, before it gets too late, that we have time to really address that issue. Given the hour. So let's take five minutes. Long-term budget forecasting consideration. An operational referendum discussion item.
I'll start. I'll start and then we'll, you can finish. Okay, so the last three meetings, the board has had discussions specifically about various aspects of the budget. Last time it was about the capital projects and where we're at there. So I feel confident that all board members have a real good understanding of where our deficiencies, where our challenges are. So now comes time to what are we going to do about it? Let me talk about what we're going to do about it. Okay? So there are several pieces, there's a lot of documents we put on board docs. Didn't mean to overwhelm you, but I, I think all those examples on there, at least there is a resource you can go back to them. We're not going to go through every one of those documents tonight. So a couple of things that we want to talk about. We want to talk about with referendum planning, timeline, about when things could happen. We have to talk about what type of referendum, recurring versus non-recurring, operational versus capital things. And then obviously the amount. Okay, what are the things that we think we need to have additional support for? So if we could start by just, well, it's written for you in a couple of different documents showing the timeline. You really have three options, okay? We've got the spring election in April. And the timeline there is you'd have to decide by January 26th to adopt the resolution. Going into next fall, it could be the primary election, okay, which is in August. You'd have to make that decision by the end of May. And then obviously the presidential election next November, make that decision by the end of August. So those are three options right now you have before you as we move forward. So I mean, we'll come back to that later after we talk about the more specifics.
When's the primary election?
The fall primary would be in August.
Really? I thought we, wasn't ours in April or something? When's our presidential?
February 16th, I believe.
There's a.
That's not our presidential primary?
No. No, it's the non-partymists. It's the spring election primary.
But then we're going to have another presidential primary election?
Yes.
But that's not August?
That's August.
No, it's April, I think.
No, they changed.
They changed it to August?
Let's move on.
Because it used to be February.
Okay, so as far as determining, okay, what, what might we need in a referendum? There's really two pieces. The first one, and this is one of the electronic documents, we did not make this public because we want to get a feel for, okay, we're, have that discussion first. Then we absolutely need to put together a document to make public. But just as a starting point, as a first draft, you have a document that says potential items to include in the operational referendum. And we've broken it up into basically our current budget deficit of the $151,000 and then some of the other big buckets of items that have been deficient over the years. Athletics, I think I mentioned, we're to the point, we're not even buying, we're relying on booster clubs to buy uniforms and some of the things that really are essential to the, to maintain the programs and, you know, and a number of other things. Our billing budgets have been slashed over the years. And just, not only just, you know, supplies and equipment, but professional development as well. But, you know, things like equipment, you know, tech ed, you know, those things are expensive and we've been just neglecting, deferring, deferring, and we have some real needs there. And we'll get into the specifics of all these, you know, in the future. But just looking at the big picture. Building the grounds, of course, you've heard the report on that. Curriculum instruction, we haven't talked too much about that. That's something we need to talk more in depth about, the shortcomings of our. that's something we need to talk more in depth about, the shortcomings of our instructional resources. We've talked about adding AP courses, well, there's an expense with that, with buying new textbooks and resources, and so we have a need there. District technology, you've heard tonight, you know, for parents, you're all well aware that we definitely are doing the best we can to try to keep up with technology. We've done a good job with infrastructure, but devices and so on is always a thing of catching up. And then personnel, we need to flesh this out a lot more as well, with regard to staffing, we talked about, and then even how we compensate that staff, all tied in together. So, these are big pictures, these numbers, I want to make clear, we did not, we did some individual consultation with some of our administrators, but we have not sat down and put together detailed lists and say, here's the exact amount, but these are pretty good estimates to start with, and we'll go back and get that detail for you as we move forward, but I think just, we'd like to start with the talk of the big picture. And so, I think that'd be one thing to discuss tonight, is kind of this list and big items, you know, with that total dollar.
So this is a district office document, basically, you haven't gotten out to expand it or to?
Yeah, and maybe you can expand a little bit about where you got those numbers.
So, when we entered into the zero-based budgeting, a lot of the forms, requests came in that went above and beyond what we had typically allocated. Some of that's where these numbers came from, in addition to having individual conversations with, you know, obviously Lisa, talking to her about the curriculum instruction piece, which then broads out based on her and the buildings and stuff, but a lot of it comes from what the buildings we had requested that we were unable to provide them during our normal budgeting cycle, going through a zero-based budgeting process. And then obviously having conversations with, you know, some administrators had sent in, hey, if we are going to referendum, this is the type of things that we would need or were short on, or conversations that I've had personally with teachers or administrators, you know, especially when we talk about like fine arts, the nursing department, and not providing or replacing those equipment that continue to break down and those types of things, and then obviously working with the athletic director and the athletic side of it. But we can still do a lot more work to get it fine-tuned, but this is definitely where it started, it was from that zero-based budgeting document that we worked off of.
So, this, all these things in operational are specifically, we would ask for authority to exceed our revenue limits in order to fund these. And so, and we'll talk more about that, but that's, that's what operational would be. And before we get into that specifics, the second type of referendum would be the second document, and that's the one you saw last meeting, the summary put together by C.G. Schmidt and I've said you and architects of those building needs. And that's the one that over the long term totaled over fourteen million dollars. And I'd like to focus on those first two columns, the urgent needs, a total of five hundred fifty-two thousand, and then the need in the next two to five years of five point six million. You heard Jeff Carr speak to those last meeting about that were really, you know, those are catching up with us. And so, these items, if you would wanted to include any of these in a referendum, that would be a capital referendum. So instead of just a one-time, you know, you would not, in that case, simply say, it'd be spread out, you would borrow to do those. So you get authority to issue debt in order to, you can explain better than I, Jared, I'm messing this up, but.
So, on the capital side, we would issue bonds to, you know, sort of take that short-term loan, so either ten, fifteen, twenty, or twenty-five, or up to thirty, depending on what the life of some of those things are. So the biggest difference is when you're looking at the referendum to exceed your revenue limit, that exact dollar amount, so if you're looking at, whatever that exact dollar amount goes right on the tax roll immediately that year, and continues based on if you do a non-recurring or a recurring, or a capital one, is you're looking at, say, six million dollars, and it might be spread over thirty years, so that six million dollars plus interest is spread over thirty years, it becomes part of our debt service where the referendum for an operation on the revenue limit specifically goes in a revenue limit, which increases our expenditure ability in each of those fiscal years that has been authorized by referendum.
So essentially, if you decided to ask in a referendum for six million dollars to fund those first two columns, you would not be adding six million dollars to the tax levy in one year, that'd be spread out, it'd be a real minimal, it's easy to spread that. Okay, whereas the operational, that is how much would go right into the tax levy, and then for however many years you asked. And so you, you have the option of saying, we'd like to exceed by this amount for X number of years, typically districts go three to five years, or you could say recurring, that it goes on forever, and so that's really, they're very different. I think we should talk about both, certainly the operational is essential, that we meet these, you know, these deal with the day-to-day, the teaching and learning, that we really have those needs, but we can't neglect the buildings as well, and so we talked about that long-range plan. This has nothing to do with building a new school, that's a whole separate issue, but we still should have the discussion about, do we want to address some of these needs at the same time, or do you want to defer these longer until we're ready for the school? And, you know, we actually had our core planning team meeting today, and we talked through that a little bit, and so I think that's something that we should talk about. You could very well combine these two in any one of these upcoming, you know, elections for a referendum, and they said defer the whole new building thing to, you know, we're not ready for that yet, so that's kind of the big picture of things to consider.
You have a building and grounds department budget on your list, which is five hundred thousand round terms, and then we have an urgent needs over here up close to that, are those two the same figure or different figures?
Well, the dollar amount of the five hundred thousand dollars is to increase our ongoing on an annual basis to be able to address some of the capital projects that have led to these types of things. So right now, when you look at our capital budgets, our capital seller projects for maintenance and ongoing operation maintenance, we're not, we don't have enough money to actually worry about fixing the roofs, so then we continue to defer those. And so that's where these projects come in, and so the request of the five hundred thousand dollars would be to expand those things so that we're being more proactive instead of being reactive and being able to address. Now, obviously, a roof is like one point two million dollars, so just because we're adding five hundred thousand dollars, but what we can do is we can work with those companies and borrow that money, but instead of trying to push off and all of a sudden you receive a report that says we're projects of fourteen million dollars, that five hundred thousand dollars would assist the district in doing annual upkeeps to, so we're not deferring as many projects.
Okay, so, so this is basically a safety, like you say here, it's a safety and maintenance thing that we estimate that we've under-budgeted for, or cut the budget for one reason or another, and the five hundred and fifty-two thousand is, is not maintenance? Is that the way I read it there?
Well, those are urgent things that would need to be, so if you, if you go back to the big.
How do those two numbers fit? Are they, are they separate?
They're separate, but yet the five hundred thousand of the operational can start offsetting those. So, you know, some of those capital projects that are on this five hundred fifty-two thousand dollar list for the urgent needs can be addressed through our capital budgets, but since we don't have that, that's where they're on this list. So, when we're looking at it, you know, you could say, well, the two to five years is a five point five, that could be your capital, and then if we are able to pass the five hundred thousand of the operational, we can address those urgent needs under that, and then continue to work out, but that five hundred thousand would be used each year, so, yep, we could address the urgent needs, but then the following two to five years, we would only be addressing five hundred thousand dollars each year of that five point two.
So basically, what Dan's talking about is, is if we can go with the five hundred thousand dollars and pass that operationally, we substantially address the maintenance needs in column one, beginning to, and that if we want to go beyond that, we would, we would go to the borrowing plan, that, the long-range borrowing plan, to up maybe that five million or something like that.
That's exactly, yeah.
I see what you mean.
And?
And these numbers, if you put them off for two years, year, two, three, four years, they won't be those numbers anymore, they're going to be a lot bigger numbers.
Well, yeah, in some cases.
So if that half, half million dollars could be addressed as a capital referendum or an operational referendum, is there a sense of what strategy is more palatable to people, or more likely to?
I can tell you on an operational side, as a, as a school business official, my recommendation would be to definitely include the five hundred thousand or at least some portion in the operational, because part of the reason that we're seeing this fourteen million is that we haven't had a budget that has sustained the number of buildings that we've had, and then it does force, you know, more deferred, you know, maintenance. Now, we're not going to be able, always be able to avoid deferred maintenance, just because there's some dollar amounts that are just so large that we can't, or going to operational, but that's why I think when you look at both of them, that taking the five hundred thousand and adding that to our current one, it gives us in that range where we believe when you look at other school districts across the state, we're now more in line with the number of, you know, where we should be at with those types of budgets.
Yes, that makes sense to me, thank you.
Jared, the eight hundred fifty-one thousand, the current budget deficit, does that include salary increases, or is that with fees?
So, that would include, that's for this year, so that included our two percent.
That's for this year, okay, what about?
So the next year, we would do a.
What's the calculation?
I think we went with a two percent as well as the CPI hasn't came out.
Okay.
And then obviously, we could give it a little bit additional, so this eight fifty-one dollar does change a little bit, but until we know what our enrollment would be, it's not going to increase, so when you look at the five-year forecast, you know, next year it can increase a little bit, but then the following year it jumps back up, so when we average it out, we felt comfortable with using this current year's deficits as our number included in the referendum.
How much project does that two years, two percent salary increase cost approximately?
District-wide?
Okay.
I don't, I'm not going to chance it, I can't, for whatever reason, it's not coming to me, so I don't want to throw in a number that's incorrect.
It's in the, you're right, okay. Any further questions?
Well, I have one, I have one more. Have you built into the two million three hundred and sixteen thousand a projected fulfillment over some period of time of trying to realize the aspirations, the goals of the teacher compensation plan?
Yes, so under the personnel section here, that money here would be to, obviously, address class size, but also to implement our staff compensation models, not only the one that has been approved, but as we work through, you know, support staff and those types, that it definitely allows us to fully implement those. Might not be able to implement it immediately here, but over a couple of years, we could get that full state.
Well, I wouldn't expect to implement the thing, full thing in the, in the first year, but it seems to me that we need to have a, something of a short-term vision to get to our advertised goals, so to speak.
Yep, and that's where we put that at.
Susan?
One of the things is, I would look at this in your, it's my impression, looking for some kind of input on the actual document. Again, I think the language on the building and grounds department, five hundred thousand, is really good. It says to address building, maintenance, and safety needs as outlined from long-range facility assessment. You might even put, I mean, it's nice to know that it wasn't just the board who made these recommendations, that, you know, these came from experts as well as the community, so that kind of implies that. Then you get down to personnel, and it, it sounds more focused. So, of the three things you put forward, you took, you talk about increased student achievement by funding staff positions such as gifted and talented and interventionalist, you know, again, this is where we talk about the individualized learning and literacy and response intervention, and that is for every single child in this district to grow. So, I might work on that personnel language a little bit, it just sounds a little bit too focused to me. And then I might, when you talk about athletics, I bet, understanding that several board members didn't know this either, that we don't buy uniforms for our students, those are all bought by the booster groups, and we don't buy, again, buy some of the safety equipment. So I think it's important to talk about equipment replacement, well, people don't understand what that means in athletics, it's about safety. It's about concussions, it's about, and at least a significant number of our sports are about concussion prevention. No matter whether you're wearing a helmet or just having the equipment on that prevents that. So, I would add minimally the word to athletics to identify safety. Just like you did in the building and grounds, again, if that's a factor, then all the community.
Yeah, I think, I would agree with Susan that each one of these items will need a sentence or two, it has to be, it has to be an easily-read thing too, but each of them require a, something that communicates it to parents and, and community. I think Susan hit, hit the mark, you know, itself and, and that sort of thing, and it's a eight hundred and fifty-one thousand current, current budget deficit. That explanation will come in, why do we have the deficit? And that's, that's the whole page itself probably, but, but we, but eventually, we need, we need brief explanations that hit the core of people's, not only their brain, but their, their heart.
Compelling, what makes it compelling? Why are we here today?
How much, how much does this, being a tertiary heated district, how much does this impact our state revenue?
Well, we've actually started to see a little bit more because we've saw our property values increase and our enrollments not increase as much. However, you know, it does, you know, increase the amount of, decrease the amount of aid that we would potentially get, because right now, you know, we are, as of this year, about twenty-four cents per dollar negative aid, so. So there's a shift now, if property values continue to increase at that four percent like we have now, I haven't ran those, you know, for first, because we just sort of came up with our two point three million, I can't tell you what that looks like, and if that's the number that we're looking, we'll start putting those into the models to get a better idea of where, how that impacts our state aid. And if state aid, you know, obviously decreases, it's going to impact even larger than what, more reductions.
Thank you. Susan?
I think two other factors that are going to be really important for us as we start making these decisions are, one, is anybody else going to referendum within these timeframes, being the town, the village, and the city of Monona? Because I would say, if we put up a referendum and the city of Monona puts up a referendum, that could affect us. So, I think we need to make sure we're in very clear and open communication with those areas. And, you know, if you notice, the Dane, wasn't it Dane County, it's levied, went up? So taxpayers are going to see a thirty-five dollar increase from Dane County. So again, looking at the overall effect to our district taxpayers, and where we, that might affect our strategy in terms of dates and times. I don't know, but I think we're going to have to, at least, even if they say, oh, definitely, we're not going to referendum, we at least need to be tuned in to the fact that we heard you discuss that in a meeting, so we're tuned in to the fact that you might.
Dean?
Jared, in determining the timing of referendum, if a, if we were to have this impact our next academic year, we would need to pass it by the summer, wouldn't we?
Well, there was a recent law change, so, two things is, if you went to the spring election for April, I mean, you passed it, obviously, you know, it allows everybody to move on in where we're at. If you go and you fail it, you do have another opportunity, as of right now in state law, to go back in either the primary in the fall or the regular fall, with the fall being your last one, you know, the law change allowed us to have our, the fall election affect that year's budget, but you're also making some large decisions. If we're looking at, just say, an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit. But you're also making some large decisions. If we're looking at, just say, an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit in April, if it passes, you can move forward. If, if it doesn't pass, then the board has to make the determination, we're gonna go back in the fall. But knowing that if it fails there, you're gonna use referen, you're, you're gonna use fund balance because, um, you can't, you're not gonna lay off staff, you know, two months in. You can't lay off staff two months into it. So, you know, you're also looking at your overall, you know, okay, if we fail referendum, we don't pass it, we're, we're automatically committed to using fund balance. Where in April, you know, it does give you that flexibility because with the, the law change there, you know, contracts haven't been sent out to staff. And so, if they're due, if, if the board decides that we do need to make reductions, because as one of the documents that was outlined in here was our last budget reduction process. Which, if you see the things that start falling below or above that one point two, they are programmed. And which then ultimately, you know, go along with staff. And so, you know, obviously, the April gives you that ability as a board to say, no, we need to make those cuts. Or we're going to go in and try one more time, but we're gonna take fund balance if it doesn't work.
So, the, your summary is then, uh, if, if a referendum passes after April, is that it, and, uh, and should it fail after April? That it will have, it'll have immediate impact on partly that current year and of course, the following year?
Yep.
Is that true?
Yes.
And, uh, and so, the, the last date that we could impact next year's budget positively would be?
The November.
Okay, it can be done in November.
The November first general election, but it would have to pass.
Okay.
November eighth.
Okay, so if we delayed it, it would have to pass in November. If not, it has to be done earlier.
Yes.
Carrie?
Can I ask a follow-up question? If, if it would fail in November, it, that was what you mean about teacher contracts. Could it be set up in such a way that the cuts would set in like in January?
Um, if you were to say you were gonna reduce supplies, you could possibly maneuver something like that, but we would have to hold back deals. Um, staffing, you could, our contracts are outs, um, you know, obviously, support staff, there could be changes. But, you know, typically in schools, it's really, it runs on that fiscal year, has to be done by the end of the, in one fiscal year before you start.
I was thinking, you couldn't say, we're having no spring sports, or, you know, something that like just hadn't happened yet in that year, so if it doesn't pass, we're not gonna do this.
Well, bust the plan, like if we were to say cut spring sports, or, you know, Jeff would need to communicate, just as an example.
Random, but something that happens only in the spring that we couldn't do then.
Right, right, so, um, typically, that hasn't happened, hasn't been something that districts has happened along with that process.
Yeah, I was just thinking about as an immediate, like the November timing, because you couldn't go back and change something.
I mean, we have year-to-year contract, the people who are, the stu, people who are paying for, have your, the spring sports have year-long contracts.
Right.
Right.
And so that, so that, so there's not very much we can, there's, there is a little space you can play with, um, mid-year, once you, once you've issued this contract. Jeff?
So, I'm a little confused on what we're doing here, because it seems like we're throwing darts at a board. Like, shouldn't we have a step-by-step-by-step thing? I mean, shouldn't we be like, okay, is this the final number we're gonna ask for, or should we just get together, figure out the final number we're gonna ask for? And then maybe find a date, and then worry about tweaking wording, and then, like, you know, we're, we're seeing like, if you fail your plan, your plan fail. And it doesn't seem like we have a, a step-by-step, and we don't have time to keep going.
The question, right. Question you have here tonight is to have this discussion and decide how it is exactly that we want, you know, what plan we're gonna use to move forward. And I guess to that question, is there a consensus, uh, support on the board to, um, plan for moving forward for a referendum to fund two sixteen, two seventeen? Which is the next, right?
They have a referendum next year.
Have a referendum to fund the next school year, which is what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, I mean, that, that figure is undisputable, but we already know that because we've seen that in our deficit. And that's what we're pulling out of our fund balance for this year, so we know we can't maintain what we're doing this year without that money. Um, the other ones, last, at the last board meeting, we had a good presentation on building and grounds where we all kind of came away with the five hundred thousand figure. I think there was some consensus for that. The other things I know have come from work with it, but yeah, there's room to talk about the exact number and when. I did check the April, the presidential primary is April fifth, it's the same as the general, as the general spring election, so.
So, there'd be two elections.
That would be a turnout, that'd be a, yeah.
Two elections where people vote next year.
Right, I would think, right, so it's, it's worth taking note of as well, I think.
So, so again, the question is, is there consensus that we should move forward? Let's see, a thumbs up for funding two sixteen, seventeen, starting in two sixteen, seventeen with a operational referendum? So, there's general consensus. Is there a consensus that we should try for the April election? And the reason I ask that, and I'm saying that we wanna set that in stone, but I'm saying we ask that, is that we have to get, uh, planning going quickly if we're going to shoot for that one. And, and so the question is, do we want to, wanna try and shoot for the spring election? Again, thumbs up or thumbs down. I think that that's a reasonable consensus. Anyone else? Yeah. Um, so that brings, the, the question we have is what do we, what do we do to proceed, uh, move forward? How do we plan? How do we, uh, I mean, what are the next types of steps we take?
Can I?
Hey, hey, Susan?
I think the other question is, that's the operational piece. We also heard some discussion about a possible additional capital referendum, and I think, I think we should think seriously about that, about doing that. Say, they, it would be a separate question, um, and it's possible we pass one and not the other. But I think, these are significant needs, and I, I think it might be worth moving forward. The other thing is there are some, well, anyway, yeah, we could, I think, I just think we should talk more about that as well.
Well, I mean, you've thrown that out, I mean, that's, let's, let's discuss that. I mean, if we, if we put the five hundred thousand dollars into an operational referendum that does, uh, that does cover some of the building.
Just the urgent ones, you know, I just think we've got some other big ones, it's not gonna make much of a, it'll make a little dent in this five point five million dollar one.
Right.
In the next two to five years, but it won't cover it, and I'm just thinking, um, there's some significant work at Winnequa, for example.
Why don't you make the case that we need to do that and if we can?
Well, I, I think that, I think it would do a couple of things. First of all, there are some needs in all the buildings in the district. There are some very significant needs at Winnequa Middle School, um, and by school that are, that are on here. And the Winnequa Middle School, it's a lot of that is their whole HVAC replacement. Um, so it would be doing something good for all the buildings and a lot in Manona. Because our facility referendum will be really doing something in Cottage Grove, so there's a little bit of an equity piece in that. And I think that does have to be a separate question, and we haven't decided when that'll be yet. I, I realize we're having a workshop in December to talk more about grade configuration and maybe move, and maybe, you know, we need to keep moving toward more of our understanding on when will be the appropriate time? Or what, what else do we, what other information do we need before we know? That may be a whole year out, and I think it'd be nice to have some, some of these things taken care of and then moved to that. I mean, I guess that's, it's part of my thinking on that. I think it's, you know, I think you can't, um. I, I don't want, I don't necessarily wanna see us go to three separate ones, and I, I just think if we do, if we think through these and decide this is something worth pursuing. It would make some sense to possibly do it at the same time in two questions, because they will be two. Um, with an eye towards maybe a facilities one either the following year might be the time we do it. Um, I mean, I think we do have to look at enrollment and how fast that's coming, that's a whole separate discussion, I realize, but I think you have to think about the whole thing, that's the big picture.
Susan?
Um, I have two quick questions. One, do we know where the legislation is, um, if we fail? Then we can't go back for two years?
Well, I don't think it's actually been introduced. I think it's still being circulated, so, but it's still could pass next year.
So, but it's still possible?
It won't happen before January first, but it could happen.
But it could happen before our April, which would put us around Big Vine.
It could happen.
The other question I have is, um, again, if we're gonna circulate these documents, the CG Schmidt document. I, I just think we need to be cognizant of how we state the name of the school, because Susan just said Winnequa Middle School, and I'm going.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, but you read it, you read it, because that's what it says.
Well, I know it, I'm sorry.
So, I think it's really important that we identify that as it is. Otherwise, it's gonna be very confusing to the community as we go forward with the information.
And it's also not Glacial Glen Middle School either, it's just Glacial Glen School, so we would need to correct those two things. If we corrected it before, I would have that.
I think they do consider.
It is a middle school.
It's not called, it's called Glacial Glen School because fifth grade is not part of the middle school.
Actually, all of them are wrong.
Yeah, that's right, Maywood Elementary, it's all.
Actually, if you wanna, you could put the, you could put the grade configurations.
Well, before we get into the details of that, does anyone wanna discuss, uh, a, um, I'm sorry, a, a building referendum for, for maintenance? A capital referendum. Carrie?
I have some personal concerns with going to a capital referendum that doesn't address what the long-range facilities planning committee isn't talking about with capacity expansion in Cottage Grove. Because I think that would be very confusing after a year of people seeing things in the paper about long-range facilities planning. And then going out with a proposed capital referendum that would have one point three million dollars of capital projects at Winnequa School. I mean, that would be really hard, I think, to reconcile for people who aren't as close to this as we are. So, just wanted to throw that out there as we're thinking about a capital referendum, what the public expectations might be around that based on what we've already been talking about publicly.
Susan?
I appreciate that, but keep in mind, these capital things came out of that committee, of the review from that committee, it's all part of that committee's report, that's where, that's where it came from.
Right, right.
So, people, some people are familiar, and I think the other thing is.
The way it appears a referendum question is what I was thinking about.
We've talked a lot about if we do new construction in Cottage Grove, we've got to look at equity in Manona. These needs at Winnequa School are very significant, so I think you're doing something for this community and you're doing something big for Cottage Grove when you build this school. So, I, I think those are all very important things to keep in mind in terms of the public buy-in for this.
Jeff?
So, if we do this for Winnequa now.
I mean, it's not just Winnequa by the way.
I know, but I'm just saying, if we do this for Winnequa now, then we do a building referendum two years later, would, would we also then have to equal out Winnequa more and Winnequa stuff? Or could you go back and say, two years ago, we did this, so now we're doing this?
I, I think only if you did, uh, extra special technology learning space, for example, you might wanna look at what if what, you know, I don't, I think, I think it's more important to keep.
I don't know the answer, I'm just asking.
Plowing that has significant needs, and HVAC has significant needs first.
It's big money though, it's big money.
It is big money, but I.
I'm just asking the question, I don't know the answer.
So, I, I think either you do it now or you lump it in then.
Right.
So, you could do that too, that's another option.
Uh, Dan, do you wanna?
Well, just on that thought, if you were to do the capital, I think you'd look at that two to five-year piece, okay? So, you're touching every building at, you know, five and a half million. Keep in mind, that's debt, and if you spread it out over twenty years, we're talking about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. So, money-wise, it's way lower than the operational, still significant, don't get me wrong, but, uh, but I think then the other thing is, if you were to do that. Say, we are ready for a building in two years or three years, at that time, you would go to the six to ten-year plan and add that stuff in. Because by the time you finish, that stuff is gonna come up. So, either way, there's plenty of work to go around at every building.
Dean, you had, you had a?
I, uh, let me put it this way, I, I'm concerned that, uh, in terms of the long-range facility plan, we don't have all of our ducks in order. We have land issues, we have, uh, uh, and I, and I think, and I, I think the most important priority that we have is to get an operational referendum to operate the schools that we have. I also think that there is potential in the, uh, in the long-range facility plan, we could cobble it in a lot of different ways, in different features and so forth. But I, I, I really think that there are features in, in that proposal that could get politically complicated, that would, could affect both. You know, and I, I think we could build unity around the operational referendum while we continue, uh, while we continue the big issue. Uh, I, I think that one of the things that I see, at least right now, is that even the minimal newspaper reports that we've had on, um, the reports of the, of the grade configuration where it's talking about building schools, and then nobody's really talked seriously about building. Has at least come to me as, oh, we're, we're building schools, I, you know, the last school built was always yesterday, you know, and that sort of thing. I, I'm very, I'd be very concerned about the, about the impact on the operational referendum, I, I really am.
If we include any capital, you mean, or just?
Oh, some capital, maybe, you know, the.
Other than the five hundred thousand?
Yeah, you could, you could do a small one or something like that, but I, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't, uh, I, I think we have a, I think we have a long way to go to get, uh, the committee and us and that sort of thing to where we are. And that, and we can't do that by, by the January date where we have to get this on, I don't think. I, I, my political sensitivities say that we can't, we, we can't put a, a big capital referendum on at the same time of the operational. I do not want to jeopardize the operational.
My comment would be is that you, you mentioned, yes, you've paid off for twenty years, and that's two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, but the budget, that ballot item says half, says five, five million dollars. And you'll see, you'll see one, you know, one point two or, you know, two point three, whatever it is, and then you see five million dollars. And there's not that distinction when you're.
The operational referendum unites both communities and, and, you know, in my, in my judgment. And I think the other has, has a longer range, uh, ed, community educational need on, on why we have to, why we have to have it. That's, that's, I, I'm not questioning the issues, I'm just questioning the timing of it.
That would be my sense too, that to focus on the operational, the five hundred thousand dollars buys us some time in terms of the maintenance. And, and, and you get some things done, and then we can think more and, you know, develop a, a more thorough plan for moving forward with, um, uh, capital. And I think that this issue of balance when we do that is an important one. And putting this all together into something that's balanced is, is, I think, a holding off so we can do that, that might be a useful exercise, yes.
In the operational, is five hundred thousand the maximum that we would put there? Or is that a number that would be something that we would wanna potentially look at being seven or eight, or something that would, um, offset the, some of the other things that we know are coming one way or the other?
We could definitely increase it or decrease it.
Well, does two point three, is there some magic, here's what I'm asking, is there some magic number where once we're over two million, it's sort of between two point three or two point four? It's not gonna make it, but if you really have the, we, we already know, we have the articulated binder of what we wanna do with that money, there's no question about it. Would that make sense in the operational?
I think it's the balancing act of having a total, because those, so two point three or two point five million goes on to the tax roll as a lump sum, the entire amount. So, looking at that potential tax increase over one year to the next year, and where politically we feel that, you know, we can sustain that and people support it. You know, even though those are, um, education, or needs for educational process to continue. But then also, when we're looking at that, you know, obviously, we have other needs in the district, so trying to balance that. So, you know, when we look across, you know, yes, it would be nice on the operational side to have a million-dollar operational side of things. Um, but when you look across the state, that's not necessarily what we're seeing. So, that, I mean, not that we don't wanna reach for the stars, because that's what we should be doing to make it best, but also being financially responsible and trying to meet those needs. And when you look at those urgent needs, and then also knowing on the financial side of it that, you know, we could possibly be looking at doing more projects in that five hundred thousand dollars and finance it over two or three years, and taking that five hundred thousand dollars and using it to pay loan payments for that, for that, you know, conversation. Instead of saying that we're gonna pay for the whole project at once, we could say we're gonna do five large projects, work with a bank to, to finance that, pay over three years. Um, because that's what we sort of did with phase one with the energy project. Uh, we didn't go to the full revenue limits, uh, we only used fifty thousand of it. Um, we did replace a rough through part of that, and so what we did is we took those payments out of the capital budget until it was paid off. Um, so we, you know, when you look at it that way, you can sort of scratch it over, um, but when you add that five hundred to the three hundred thousand and present it to that seven fifty, eight hundred thousand dollar budget, which I believe is, you know, sustainable.
Thanks, good. I was asking that because I didn't quite know where that threshold is or how that works out to a, a percentage jump from one year to the next that might make someone really take notice.
Yes, so, I mean.
Right. I mean, I, I think it makes sense for big-ticket capital items to be paid for with, you know, capital referenda that match those items. Rather than trying to build them into a recurring referendum, because you're only gonna build that word roof once. What's your justification for that money for the next year? because you're only going to build that roof once. What's your justification for that money for the next year? You know, well, I mean, once every 15 years, you know.
Well, I mean, the thing about it is we've got, we've got many, many projects articulated. So, your point is well-taken that the roof you do once, but there's many other things on the list, and so-
But I, yeah, I think that, I think, and I just think it makes sense to sort of match up the need with the type of referendum.
Okay.
How should we proceed, the next steps? Do we have proposals for what are the next steps?
If you're saying that, then would you pull the cap, you wouldn't pull the capital projects out of this?
No, because-
Because this is maintenance.
No, no.
There's definitely a need to raise that budget.
Because, because our maintenance needs are, are, sort of take two forms. There's big-ticket capital items, but there's, every year, there's always this ongoing thing that we want to deal with. And there's, it's, there's kind of a, it's not, it's not click-cut. It's obviously not click-cut between them.
Right. Just verifying what you said is you have capital projects in the operationalism, all kinds.
No, I'm, I'm not saying take, I, I would, I would say the capital is sort of, there's capital and there's maintenance kind of thing, so we'll go that way.
Does this add up to be 2 million 3?
Yep.
You need the 8.5 at the top, and then it adds up to 2 million 3.
The best on the limit.
Yeah, the best, well, it's, that's a little less. It's about 9% of our current lev- levy. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, just, just for scale, it's about 9% of our current levy. It's also about $725 a student. It's, doesn't get us back to where we were before 2010. Doesn't, it doesn't even, it does not, this does not even make us whole where we were with 2010.
Right.
At 2010.
I, I think we have a good case of cutting responsibly and effectively with community input. The only, the only thing I see on here is, is that I, I, I see less teaching and learning and curriculum instruction. And, and there's athletics, buildings, buildings, too, on it. But I think, I think we can sell, I think we can sell this one.
That's what happens when you neglect those other things, which we've done, because we've cut those areas in order to try and not hurt the others so much.
I don't think I ever voted to neglect it, did I?
All right. I think, I think we-
Well, I think we did.
I think, I think we're in agreement of what we want to do. The question is, how do we do it at this point? So, let's, let's think about that. Do we have any proposals about what our next step as a board to do to develop a plan?
You're specifically agreeing to have an April operating referendum?
Or at least, at least making a more thorough evaluation of that might be, might be in order.
Come back and look at the whole picture with-
Right. So, I need, what I need, what we need is to develop a plan. Susan?
I, I actually would potentially suggest that Dan and administration meet within the next week and bring forward their ideas. And then each of us, kind of like pick your top five, be challenged to come back with a focused idea on how to proceed. So that we can meet and say, and maybe we need to send another day for a workshop to do this, and maybe it's only an hour workshop instead of a two-hour workshop. We come in and say, "Okay, in one hour, we're going to develop a plan, and Dan said this is what the administrators think we should do." And then by this time, you've already received a document from us, and we call it a-
I, I think it's simple. I feel like these are all, these all make a lot of sense to me.
I do.
I think we just need to write, get a question written up. I mean, we, we got to approve a question by January 26th. We need to build a communication plan.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I agree with your comments about this. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I think we need to be able to explain this to the public. I'm very comfortable with it. These are not lots of money. I mean, curriculum instruction, 165,000?
I know.
That's maybe the new AP Chem class. I mean, that's, seriously, that's, that's, so I, I think these are good figures, and I just think we need to get moving. I don't, no more studying.
That's what I mean. I don't need to study.
A communication plan, I think, is not, is, yeah, it's not a small, small task.
No, it's a big one.
And I think it's primarily what we're talking about moving forward is how we develop that. Carrie?
Yeah, I had a question about exactly, and I agree with everything you just said, exactly how long of a timeframe do we need to implement a communication plan and do it before April? That's really a concern that I have, just knowing what it is.
And I think we have to develop relationships with the community and get a group of, of community people who hopefully are on our side, who can take this a larger issue. I would, yeah, Dean?
I would suggest that you, I would suggest that you just have an ad hoc referendum committee of two or three board members that would come back with some specific, with some specific recommendation and involve all the board in the next steps.
I would be willing to work on that and help set the timeline for the communication plan, which I'm particularly worried about is having enough time to do before and implement and have the awareness that we need before April.
I'd like us to include at least one and maybe two representatives from each of the communities. Just because, again, this whole piece about we could walk out there and have the village and the city with a million-dollar referendum at the same time. Again, we've got to have good, strong communication as we move forward, and I think we need a committee that includes people who are clearly in touch at those levels. And I don't know what the move for the village is right now without that.
Well, my, my, my suggestion is, is to, is to get a small, this is a small group together, and, and I think that we can, we can begin to project everything that Susan is talking about, because it has to be done, and we need to, we need to get it done right away.
All right.
But we, we won't do it in a workshop.
My, my thought is actually to, it, this is, this is in the purview of the community engagement committee. My thought is to build on the communication committee, communication committee, because that way we don't have to come back and approve an ad hoc committee. We can just move on this right away. Now, you're going to have some, you're going to have some time out.
Correct, yeah. We'll discuss that. We'll figure that out.
So, so we-
I'll need to go with Susan and-
Yeah, we need to, we'll probably enforce, reinforce that committee-
Yeah.
-with additional board members then, in that case, and we can move forward. So, I will talk to Jeff, and I will solicit, if you would send me your, if you want to help out with that, send me that, how, how we, how we would like to fit in. We'll start with the community relationship committee. We'll build on that. And I think we need to come up with a purview and just want to further that open suggestions right now. And I think the first thing, I mean, the big thing is the communication plan. Is there anything else in, sort of in the charge here?
Well, I think communication plan captures what Susan recommend, recommends that it needs to have some initial spark plug involvement with people from both communities and different levels and so forth. And, you know, that sort of thing. But I think that's what that committee can come back with immediately. I, I think you ought to give it a charge of, of, I don't know, a week or 10 days for an initial-
I do. If we're going for April, we have to, we have to move along. Susan?
The other thing, and maybe you're just going to assign this to the committee, but I think there needs to be a very clear, simple communication packet. And again, Sarah Dunn has given us really good, they provide us with really good information. So, it may be that somebody, Dan, Susan, you, you need to meet with that group and say, "Okay, we're talking about going to operation referendum. I know we're going to include some of your building stock. What do you do with other districts, and what kind of materials do you put together?" Because they're experienced and pretty talented at that. That may save us trying to figure out which key fits in the line.
Any resources that we can.
Yeah.
Like you come, the-
We can involve them, but I-
Well, keep in mind, we only hired them to work on facilities. They won't necessarily assist us with operational, have a hand in the conversation.
There's a $500,000 facility.
Right, so that piece of it.
Is written in there. I'm saying minimally, come in and see what they have.
Okay. All right.
That should be done.
I'm sorry, Jeff? No, we had a-
So, we decided we're shooting for AFO, we're shooting for operational, and this is the number we're shooting for.
I don't think any of this is set in stone.
Right.
I think that this is a-
It's kind of a consensus, see, let's start working.
Right. And I think, I think, for example, I think we do need to look carefully at the numbers. We owe it to the community, look carefully at these numbers and make sure that these are the, these are where we want to be. Obviously, we don't want, you know, to burden the community any more than we absolutely have to, and so we should be really careful about that. And so, but that needs to go on in parallel, and, and, you know, the idea is that by June, January 15th, we have a final number, whatever it is. It's not necessarily this number, but we have a final number.
I'm understanding we can tweak it, but-
Yeah.
We need to write it in at least darker pencil.
This is, this is the thinking, and part of this is, I think we need to get feedback from the community in the next month or two and say, you know, "Does this sound reasonable? Is this, is this, is this going to be supported?"
Delving in, it's a huge number to anybody that just looks at it and, you know, if you support the schools, it's yes. If you don't, it's no, without actually sitting and looking where that money-
Where that money is going.
Right.
And one of the conversation points on that would be, so $50,000 for athletic, if that's being covered down by booster clubs and booster clubs aren't evaporating tomorrow, that would be a good conversation to have. Is this sustainable for the kind of work you're already doing as booster clubs and plan to continue? Or is this something that you would support us going to a referendum to take that burden off of you as booster clubs? And since I don't have those relationships, I think that would be a good question.
But I don't even, I don't think that that's really the choice we're making. I think that it's booster, booster clubs can only go so much, do so much.
Right.
And we have, I think we have needs that are beyond what the booster clubs can-
To me, the answer to that question is the booster clubs, the booster clubs are giving us a great effort to support the school district. But we need to, we need to-
Do our part.
To do our part to, to deal with this, and I, I don't want to make that the centerpiece, though, of the, of football helmets.
To your point about actually looking at these things, I mean-
Each one of them needs answers to those frequently asked questions.
We need to look at this language very seriously, because I think we need to fix some of this, because this looks like we're outfit made.
I don't think, I think this is preliminary language. This is not what we're going to sell. This is for, for the board to see what these numbers are. We need to, obviously, a lot more language needs to go behind this stuff.
Technically.
But we also have to look at the numbers.
Technically, things here in athletics, you could put under buildings and grounds, because it's not really athletics. It's, it's actual stuff that is absolutely needed for-
Or stuff that's under buildings and ground could go under athletics.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. So, I, I don't think we need to focus on athletics. I think we just need to-
Yeah, it'd be one of the things is these categories do what these are designed for.
We'll, we'll find a way to repackage it.
Obviously, it's already-
No. Yeah, but some of this is field.
So, what is the, you know, not to worry about details, but what, obviously, I think it's important to focus on the communication plan and obviously go back. But working backwards, you know, our, our board meeting, last one in January, is after the date that a resolution has to happen.
Oh, okay.
So, that means that-
Our first board meeting is not.
Our first board is not, so is the plan for us to bring an official resolution, because we'll have legal counsel, have to draft that-
Yep.
-for the board to approve that resolution at that one.
Yep.
And then the other part going even back before a resolution can be passed, is the district looking at doing a recurring or a non-recurring referendum? And we, you know, obviously, we're talking about dollar amount, but where are we at with, is this something that-
I vote for a non-recurring.
Okay?
Wait a minute. Explain us the difference.
So, a non-recurring is where you would say that you're going to ask for this for a set number of years or a time period. Where recurring is you ask for it, and then it's always there. You don't have to, you don't have any sunset. So, you know, you could say that we want 2.3 million dollars for, over the next five years, and so you list those five years out. At the end of that, that 2.3 goes away. You, as a district, have to either plan to go back for that 2.3 or say, "Okay, well, you know, we've had enough growth, and we've been able to manage that. This is just getting us by short term." Or a reoccurring where you have that 2.3, it's in your revenue limit, if you, it's just part of your base.
Forever.
Forever.
Yeah, just one thing to consider, if you are looking at the non-recurring, as far as a timeline, typically districts go anywhere from three to five years. And I think if you do that, looking at our state budget, given that it's a buy-in every two years, we know what our budget is for next year, okay? Then we know that the policymakers in the capital are still going to be in place for the next two-year budget. We don't expect any better news there. And then after that, you know, another two, so it seems to me three or five, five would be, yeah.
And I-
The legislature's not going to change in five years.
Okay, so should we, should we take this, I think, I think you've given us something to consider. I'm not sure we should decide that tonight.
No.
My, my- Yeah, we can talk about it again next month. You know, my thought is that a non-recurring seems more palatable, but, but, and the important part is get this passed.
Yeah, the problem, well, one problem with that is we could have a, a non-recurring for five years, but within that five years, we're going to have a building one. And then at the end of that five years, we're going to have to come back with another non-recurring. I mean, I think we have to think about that, too. I, I don't know. I-
But the state's so volatile, things in five years could be completely different, and we could need double what we have.
That's, that's my other concern. We don't do a recurring, we may be hurting again. I mean, this, keep in mind, half of this, almost half of this is just to keep-
Yeah.
We know what we're doing now. And so, yeah, I think that's a real concern.
Well, there's good arguments, there's good arguments for, for both. The only thing that I look at is, is that the current, I think, I think at best you have, you have at least six years before the current dominant majority of the legislature will turn over. I don't see any other, I don't see any lessening unless there's a gubernatorial change. I don't see any, any lessening of the direction which they've gone to reduce state contributions and putting a greater burden on local property tax. And so, so I, I think that, that, that's my only, I think, I think by selling it locally, the non-recurring one is the best one. The, maybe the long-term responsible one is-
Carrie?
Well, and so, the part that I guess I didn't think was correct is saying that this is all just what we're doing now.
Oh, no, just the top, just the first number.
It's only the 851,000 that's what we're doing now. So, I'm still thinking about, yeah, I mean, it's less than half of what we're doing.
But all this other stuff, these have been ignoring.
So, would there be, so the recurring that we definitely need is a million dollars or $900,000, because that's the current budget deficit that we've projected going forward. But the other things are, well, how many of these are recurring going forward, and how many of them are one-time purchases?
None of them are one-time. That would be what we would recommend. It would be in our annual budget.
I mean, I think what they're saying is-
Above and beyond what our annual budget is now, right? I mean, $100,000 a year above and beyond what we're currently doing now for technology.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a lot of technology per year. If we're not doing that, if we're not doing that now. I mean, I'm just thinking about-
Well, from a perspective, our technology budget that we have here is smaller than the technology budget for the previous district I worked in, which was half the size. This is a tiny budget that we have right now. We're not anywhere coming close to meeting what we need to do.
One of the questions I have is, amongst on this list, how much of it is sort of restoring funding, the things that we have cut over the years?
I would say all of it. Some of it, it might be going back 10, 15 years, you know, but I would guess if we went back to what the budget was, back to prior revenue limits, you know, taking into account inflation, I'm sure at one point, all the departments were funded.
Well, Susan oversaw that 1.2.
Right.
Right. Well, you know, I, we listed the big three, the last big three cuts. Prior to that, there were like seven years of cuts before that. I mean, we've been cutting for a long time, and I think we are seeing the results of it.
I know it's, it's more complicated, but $100,000, 2,000 kids, it's 50 bucks a kid. It doesn't buy a smartphone.
Well, we don't have $0 budget for technology right now. I, I was just making the point that it's not like we have a $0 budget for technology.
But we are also-
We're not able to meet our goals of our technology plans, our current budget.
Well, then fundraisers, they have smart boards in classes that are desperately needed.
And then, too, when you look at technology, you always like to focus on devices, about the, you know, the annual software fees that we have today, and that causes that technology and making sure that work currents are not seen on the list.
Brush up your software skills.
That's a little bit to see what.
And this, and dear, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you look at historically, before revenue limits came in place back in 1993, at that time, most school districts' budget looked like about 60 to 65% was on personnel, and the others were on, you know, these sorts of things. Now, most school districts have 80 to 85% of their budgets on personnel, because they cut everything else except for that, and then plus, you know, cut staff as well. So, to say, so that is really restoring to what, you know, was, taking into account inflation, what it probably once was. But that's something we probably need to look at.
Describe that to people.
Yeah. But we probably should get some real numbers.
Okay. All right. If we can then move on to the next or the previous agenda item, which is the discussion of possible approval of NEOMA. which is the discussion of possible approval of the Neola 000 series policy. Given that it's 10 o'clock, we should take a look at this and have some initial discussion about any amendments that we want here. And we can, if necessary, we can, we don't have to approve that tonight. Don't have to approve this tonight, but we can certainly start this process and think about it to get a better handle on it.
Peter, you asked for amendments to be turned into you.
Yes.
I did some this afternoon. Did you get any other ones?
Did you send them to Joyce? Did you send them to me?
You called me, I didn't give them to you.
All right.
Okay, I have them here.
Can you, do you have a copy you can distribute? So the way, the way we should proceed with this, yes, go ahead.
I appreciate you looking for a way to proceed. Again, I watched what happened after 10 o'clock at the last board meeting, and I know we've really dealt with important things tonight. And I appreciate that you're looking at, trying to figure out a way to get through some of this tonight. But you ask us to have these materials to the board members before the meeting. And so I would kind of follow your flow if I'm on track here. And that is, let's look at the amendments that were provided to us. If you want to, I'm saying we shouldn't even be doing that tonight, but let's look at those and then let's take Dean's and hold this until the next meeting. Because you, well, let me just say, when we look at this as a, as a committee, we have to look at three different documents when we look at the amendments. We have to look at the old, this piece, this piece, this piece. Now, I don't have any of that to help you with that.
Okay, if I may...
Yes.
If I may, I did ask for things ahead of, but we don't have a process for requiring that. So if the dean wants to introduce an amendment, he's free to introduce, he's free to introduce amendment. I hope, I was hoping to avoid having too many things come at us, simply because it complicated this at last minute.
Well, I hope they're all in writing with copies for all of us.
That's right, so, but let's, let's see how it goes. And I don't anticipate, given, again, given the length of the hour and given that some of these things...
Peter, Peter...
Wait, 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 we're going to take some serious discussion. I don't anticipate that we will finish this tonight. And I think that's perfectly acceptable, if we don't finish this, we can postpone it to the next meeting. And, but if you have an amendment, let's get it out, at least we can all take a look at it. And we can, and, you know, sort of hopefully consolidate what we, you know, our issues and bring it down to just a few things we need to think about before next meeting. So hopefully, we can just make some progress on that. The way I would like to proceed is to somebody to make a resolution for adoption of the Neola policies as presented. Once that's on the, make a motion for adoption. I see the revision, actually, there's a suggested motion in your packet. And then we can look at the amendments and amend as, you know, go through the amendments. In terms of the voting, to amend the resolution takes a majority vote. Under our current rules, to revise the amendments, revise the policy. So at the end, to approve it, we would need a two-thirds majority to approve it, moving on. But first, first if you, and then, again, this is the way Robert says to amend your bylaws, if you have this two-thirds rule, take a motion. To amend that motion takes a simple majority, and then in the end, to approve it, takes two-thirds.
So if we take a motion tonight, that means we're going to finish tonight?
No, no, because we can, we can postpone.
Okay.
Okay? You can always postpone, right, and you can stop at any time, postpone to the next and pick it up again. Susan?
Again, I'm just asking for clarity. So we would make a motion to approve the resolution, there'd be a second on that. We move into the resolution, so each amendment, would, we just take it very quickly as a separate motion, up or down?
Well, we would, yes, so an amendment would come up and we say, "Okay, we want to move this, include this amendment or not," and we vote on that as a majority.
And we vote on each amendment...
And if we get to the end of this and we can approve it all, I'll give, you know, in a half an hour or so, that would be great. If it takes longer, we can always postpone it. We just need a motion to postpone it to our next meeting and then we can move on.
And we'll vote each amendment up or down, right?
Right.
Just straight forward.
That's right. We'll have a discussion, but each moment, each amendment goes up or down.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Okay. Dean, you had a comment.
What?
You had a comment.
I, I just think it's late.
It is late.
Yeah, here, here's the other problem. This resolution can't be adopted the way you just said because the wording of it is such that we'd have to have a majority vote for the first part of the sentence and a two-thirds vote for the second part of the sentence under our current policy. So it doesn't make any sense, I think. The policy adoption resolution, because it's the same resolution as since the previous ones, so...
That's right. So it's, but it's one resolution.
Yeah, right, so do we see if we get a two-thirds vote on the whole thing?
That's right. At the end, you, two-thirds, and if we don't get two-thirds vote on the whole thing, then what we do is we reconsider and we make any additional, any additional amendments that we need to make to get it, get two-thirds support. Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. And hopefully, tonight, what I want to do is, if we can get, at least get all the amendments on the table, everybody can take a look at them, we can have a brief discussion about each one so that we're sort of in a position in the next meeting to move forward on this.
Certainly, since we have yours and you have mine.
I have my, that's, that's a good idea.
Oh, we got to do a resolution.
So, Jennifer?
Make a motion to postpone the discussion of possible approval of the Neola 1,000 or 1,000 series, pardon me, policies, to give each and every one of us time to consider all of the proposed amendments. I would appreciate having all of the amendments electronically available to all board members for consideration between now and our next board meeting.
Second.
Third.
This, let's see, is a motion to postpone debatable?
Why don't you ask if anybody wants to debate?
Again, I can call the question.
Hang on a second, hang on a second, you got to get a two-thirds vote to call the question. What, I understand exactly what you're saying, that's fine, Jennifer. Would you like to go through the ones that we do have?
The motion was to postpone the discussion.
That was not a motion.
Motion is to postpone. I'll get mine to Joyce electronically, and anybody else who has an amendment, they get it there?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I thought I was the delinquent one.
Can we take a vote on that, Dean?
Hang on, hang on a second. Everybody is out of order at this moment.
Well, it's after 10.
I'm totally not out of order.
No. I'm sorry, hang on a second. I have not faced this question before, so...
So you have, but I haven't seen your amendment.
Yeah, it's debatable.
There?
Yeah.
So you say Peter's senior?
I'm sorry, it is debatable. So it's been moved and seconded, discussion, and I'm going to start the discussion, which is, I would just like to go through the, briefly go through the things that I have, I have suggested since we have them already. Anybody else have any discussion on the motion to postpone?
Well, we can move on calling the question.
I've never...
Wait, the motion, the motion on the table is to postpone.
That's correct.
And it's been seconded.
My, second, rather than postpone right now, I would like to go through the ones that we already have. And then postpone, if we want to postpone after that, postpone after that. That's my discussion. Susan?
Well, what we don't know right now is whether or not any of these amendments are amendments to your amendment. And so it makes it virtually impossible to just cleanly go through yours.
Okay, my response to the view of that is, once we have seen mine, it may change what Dean and Jeff are suggesting, and may some of their amendments...
They already have yours.
I don't have his.
He's in board.
It was in board docs. They were posted, I looked at them last Monday.
All right.
It is not in my board doc.
Susan?
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think, I am in favor, I seconded the motion to postpone this discussion entirely because I think that's what we should do.
Okay. Any further discussion?
It's somewhere, right? Postponing it.
Okay. All in favor of postponing? To, did you postpone, did you give us a date when you said postpone?
Yes.
To our next meeting?
But I didn't get it.
Our, our...
December.
Uh, Dean?
Yeah, no, I'm voting yes to postpone.
Okay. All in favor of postponing?
December when, 2016?
Opposed, nay? Okay, motion carries.
Now, everybody who has amendments, get them to Joyce on Board Docs. Like, I thought I did, but I did make copies.
She sends me in Word or whatever version, I'll put, I have to put them on.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
I got copied there, because I don't trust me.
The next item on the agenda is the continuous improvement process. I would like to direct your attention to the list of the top five priorities, which we all thank you, everybody filled out. And I would like you to scroll to the bottom where it says data-driven decision-making. We have a schedule and a protocol to review data and program performance. Everybody made that a priority, selected that item as a priority.
Let's do that.
And I think that that should be our first priority.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
I know, that's...
I moved to postpone discussion of this item also.
Well...
Second.
Okay, hang on, hang on a second. It's been moved and seconded, postponed discussion.
You just wanted to make sure you could hear me.
Again, my discussion, I think that this is, this list has, we can come to consensus fairly quickly with a five-minute discussion.
It doesn't have you on here.
I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you.
You're right.
Okay. Carrie?
In terms of the discussion of whether or not to postpone, I'm in favor of quickly adjusting the document that was already prepared and posted on Board Docs tonight and proceeding with the task tonight, which was to pick one or two things that we all are in agreement on that we want to prioritize and start doing something, instead of talking about what we might prioritize that we might want to do.
Okay. Any other discussion? Susan?
It's my impression, the document that I had at, up until whatever time I looked today, which was 5 o'clock, doesn't have any of your input on it, and it has 12 of Jennifer's on it. So... Come on, I got to carry it away. I'm, I'm sorry, but I think, so Peter, you're not even on here. So we don't even know what the numbers are, we don't even, I mean...
That is correct. I did not submit any, I did not prioritize.
You asked for all of these to be heard.
I asked...
That was your request, I didn't comply.
All right, Susan, just a moment, please. Susan, just a moment, please, stop interrupting, please, just a moment. I, I did not, because I want this to be your document, and I sit back with it. I'm going to let you guys decide what this, what this, what this process is, and I'm just going to, I'm just going to mediate. And I chose to, I chose to sit it out. Number two, what we decided, we said yet last time that you could choose any item you wanted. I did give the instruction of five and Jennifer went overboard. We did decide on five, but Jennifer went over, that's okay. The, but, but people could pick any item that they choose, that was what we decided.
I actually thought it was decided that we would do the list, that you had identified some and Susan had added to it, that was my understanding, it was just that list.
And then, well, okay, no. I'm sorry, go back to the tape, because I repeated three times, you could put down anything you wanted. I repeated it to you, I repeated it to you, and I repeated it to the board, all three times. And the rules have not changed. There's a motion to postpone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, all opposed?
Nay.
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 I was an aye, sorry, I was really tired, sorry. I apologize, I do, I apologize, but I said aye.
All right, that's four, we will postpone this to the next...
She's a nay after 10.
Okay? Future agenda items? So we postpone this, anything that we want to put on for future agenda items?
No, we have enough on our agenda.
Okay. Future meetings, November 30th, Personnel Committee?
Oh, wait, 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 I have one future agenda item, and that is, and this is because I went to the legislative hearing this week on the transgender bathroom issue. And when I registered to speak, I registered as myself. And I would like us to talk at some point about whether I might be authorized to speak on behalf of the board when it's something like that, where it relates directly to our policy, which we did all approve unanimously, and I would have a good sense of where we stood.